Good morning. It is, I didn't realize we're three minutes late. We have a quorum present. This is the appointed hour, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. There is a copy of the open meetings law on the back wall. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
All right. For the Board of Equalization, Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. First on the agenda is citizen comments. Would anybody like to address this board on anything relating to Board of Equalization that is not on the agenda? This is the opportunity to do so.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sean James. I am with the firm of Smith, Slusky, Gardner, not Gardner, Smith, Slusky, Porin and Rogers now. Is it not on? It's red.
Okay, you have to be right into it, Sean.
Get in the face of it here? Is that better? Okay. Sean James with the firm of Smith, Slusky, Porin and Rogers, 8712 West Dodge, Suite 400, 68114. I'd like to make just a general overview of the 425 issue that is facing you today. The statutes that were enacted last year in response to the flooding do not exclude further calamities such as the COVID-19 disaster that we are facing now. As you probably know, Omaha is the only one of the top 50 cities that does not have a required mask law. We are also one of the red states because we have so many cases of COVID. But what COVID is doing to commercial property owners is it is so negatively impacting their income ability because retailers have to close, restaurants had to close, bars had to close, and most of these property owners had no way of knowing that was going to happen as of December 31st. On top of that, they were giving abatements, is probably the best word, to tenants who could not afford, just to keep those tenants in the space. Nobody is renting right now because they don't know what's going to happen in the future. So you're going to find the vast majority of commercial property owners and maybe some multifamily and others that are facing more than 20% loss of revenues. There, we have some examples that we will give you up ahead of time. But let's look at the different definition in the statutes of calamity first. Calamity means a disastrous event. I think we can all agree that COVID-19 is a disastrous event. And it is based upon how it affects the assessed value of the property. It's not limited to physical damage. It's the assessed value of the property that is impacted by the calamity. So if you take that and apply COVID to it, these properties do meet that requirement under the statute. So what we are here today to discuss with you and hope you agree is that 425 does apply to these properties that had such a huge loss of income due to the COVID-19. And with that, do you want to say anything else? Okay, with that, I will close my discussion. Do you have any questions?
Actually, you're just a touch ahead of things, Sean, but that's just fine.
Okay.
We're actually in citizen comments here and, and
Well, that's my citizen.
And that's just fine. I have no problem with this. But before we get into interchange of questions and answers, we really have to be down to where it's on the agenda for that. So if I, if I might, I would
Okay.
thank you for your comments and we'll get back to you in a few minutes.
We'll be right. Thanks.
I might just mention to you, we thank you for being here, but we're not supposed to comment. We've been advised by the county attorney on citizen comments.
Oh, okay.
That's why we can't comment, but we will comment, I will, about your remarks.
We'll have opportunity for it.
Okay, so will you need all of that repeated again?
Nope.
Thank you.
During citizen comments, I would ask, is there anybody else that would like to share anything with the board? If not, we will move down to Resolutions B. First, review and approval of 2020 valuations for real properties that submitted reports of destroyed real properties. So now, okay, Kevin, now we're into Sean's topic and can have the conversation.
And I would defer to the chair and the board. I have just a few slides sort of out setting up, teeing up these issues if you'd like me to go through that now or later, whenever the board prefers.
Relating to the 425?
Yep, just sort of both agenda items to come yet to come today.
I would think this would be the appropriate time for that.
Thank you. So, just wanted to give, I know we've kind of covered this ad nauseam, but just thought, we thought it might be helpful to kind of get a good grounding as we kick off the items on today's agenda. So we're all familiar with the annual property valuation protest, which that's when property owners are, any individual can protest the value of their final real property value as of January 1 each year. Property owners have the month of June to submit those protests. And this board hires referees to review those protests and make recommendations to this board. And then this board must take, hear and decide those protests by August 10th. And any property owner who's dissatisfied with the outcome of their protest can appeal to the Tax Equalization Review Commission. So that's kind of a quick overview of the standard annual protest process. This year in particular, we're hovering at just under 7,000 protests, about 6,855. The bulk of those, over 5,000 are for residential parcels, classified parcels. And this year, as you know, one of the complicating factors was this year, because of the pandemic, we could offer in-person appointments and the state also said we could offer phone appointments. And I think that was an appealing option to lots of members of the public, and so we had nearly 3,000 appointments with referees. And it was, which is a really high volume in any year, and this year in particular. So the clerk's office has prepared the spreadsheet today for the item on today's agenda is the referee recommendations that had been complete as of close of business Wednesday, I believe. And so that encompasses 4,000 recommendation, 4,026 recommendations. There are 2,829 that are still pending review or had been completed since Wednesday. And so those will be prepared for you for Monday's agenda. And just another note, as you know, one of the challenges was the referees this year were really busy with their private business. And so that was another challenge was getting enough referees to work and have time to contribute this year for review and appointments. So this year we hired seven new referees than is in our typical group. And that included after the board amended the policies and procedures to include real estate professionals. That included four real estate professionals this year. So then the other item on the agenda today is the report of destroyed real property. And to distinguish this from the valuation process, this is an opportunity that's new as of last year, was prompted by the flooding, but is now part of the state statute. It gives an opportunity to reassess significant damage to real property due to calamity that took place between January 1 and July 1. And to do this, a property owner must submit a Form 25 by July 15th to the Assessor Register of Deeds Office and the Clerk's Office. The Assessor Register of Deeds Office has reviewed these reports of real property and provided notes to the Board of Equalization today. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, one of the challenges is these timelines overlap. So again, for this action as well, the board must consider the assessed value by August 10th, which is the same deadline as this board has for the property value protests. And distinct from the other process as well as in the other valuation protest, if a property owner is dissatisfied with the outcome, they appeal to Turk. In this case, the property owner has another opportunity to appeal to the Board of Equalization. And last year, the way the board did that was to make any of those appeals reviewed by a referee and then brought back for final determination by this board. This year, the board received, and the county received 54 Form 425 reports. And they were all commercial classified parcels. So then, of course, the challenge that we got into at the last meeting is when there are properties that are involved in both processes, where they've both submitted a real property valuation protest and a report of destroyed real property. So in this case, we sort of merged the two processes into two steps. In the first step, the referees review the protests and prepare final recommendations of value. Then the Board of Equalization hears and decides the protests of duly affected process, properties, excuse me. Then those values that you approved are used for the destroyed real property report. And in this case, there'd be a bifurcation depending on dissatisfied with outcomes. They would, just like the others, you would either appeal to Turk if it's the property valuation protest the property owner disagrees with, or appeal to the BOE if it's the destroyed real property portion they disagree with. And so this year, there were 43 parcels with Form 425 filed and a real property valuation protest. And so last week is when that board took action on the first portion, the valuation protest. And then with those final values, those were prepared for the Assessor Register of Deeds Office. And on your agenda today is the destroyed property portion of that. And just a final note, wanted to reiterate that these, all the parcels that have been affected are there on the agenda for the county commissioners. You can link and see the parcels and also the Board of Equalization has a rolling list. They're updating regularly with protests as they're finalized as well with the parcels. So members of the public, this is where they could find that information.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions for Catherine at this point? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Ms. Hall, thank you and Clerk Ash and all the hard work that you put into this. It's been very helpful looking online at the spreadsheet information that's coming before us. And the latest that I went through in kind of detail, I guess, was this list of 43 parcels of Form 25 protests. And on that, I saw that there were 12 that actually had a variation between the assessed value and the Board of Equalization's recommended value, which we won't necessarily go to today. But it appeared that on all of them, the recommendation, and I believe this is from the assessor, was the property has not sustained significant property damage to qualify for destroyed real property as described in Nebraska Revive Statute 77, 1307, 1B. Is that pretty accurate that they were all found by the assessor not to have that qualification? Or maybe, maybe Mr. Goodwill is the appropriate one. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh and the rest of the commissioners, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds Office. None of the none of the Form 425s indicated physical damage. And I'd like to pick up the ball from where Sean James, who I like and respect very much, although she never calls me anymore. Where she left it, and that is, we don't really have any argument in our office that you could categorize COVID as a calamity under the definition. But to get a reduction as destroyed, a mid-course deduction, a reduction as destroyed real property, there's two elements to this. The calamity has got to cause significant property damage. And significant property damage is defined in 77, 1307 as either damage to an improvement or damage to land. Not damage to the profitability of the land or the profitability of the improvement, but damage to the land or damage to the improvement, which implies a physical damage that has not occurred here. None of the Form 425s alleged physical damage. And as an aside, there weren't, there were a significant number of them that provided absolutely no backup whatsoever, even, either in the form of, you know, rent rolls or increased expenses or anything. It was just kind of, well, I think I'll file for this, but we're not going to provide any backup that would enable you to come to any conclusion about where the value of the property would be, even if the thing qualified. So no, there's not been physical damage alleged.
And I appreciate that interpretation and perhaps, you know, the county attorney could help us here too. Because I understand where we're kind of falling down from what Ms. James pointed out to us, which is actual damage by COVID to everybody's business and income. And then what I see on here is the determination, which is just kind of black letter determination, that they don't qualify to the statute. And I, I understand what you're saying is the statute as interpreted is for physical damage like if a flood had come through your property or a tornado or, you know, a forest fire, whatever. And this COVID pandemic is an economic catastrophe. But, you know, I'd like to hear from maybe our county attorney too as well relative to, are we within the statute to make, you know, kind of the distinction that you're talking about? Because it may be that the legislature needs to fix this to encapsulate the, the type of disaster that we're currently experiencing.
Teresa York, go ahead. Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I provided the commissioners yesterday my thoughts in greater detail. I'm going to be very brief today. If you'd like more detail today, I would be happy to go into executive session with you and lay out my thoughts in full. To directly answer the question, the statute does not define damage, but I believe that there is a very good argument that Mr. Goodwilly is making to the board today. And that is that it seems to imply a physical nature to it. The very opening of the statutes, and I would direct your attention to 77, 1307, it says, "The legislature finds and declares that fires, earthquakes, floods and tornadoes occur with enough frequency in the state that provision should be made to grant property tax relief to owners of real property adversely affected by such, such events." I think that that intent also lends itself to an argument that the damage is physical. And so I, I would, I believe that the argument that Mr. Goodwilly is proposing to you today is a reasonable one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
So legal term, how do we interpret this? Because Commissioner Kavanaugh used the term black letter, so I'm assuming that means as read?
So in Nebraska, you generally give words their plain and ordinary meaning. There is no specific definition within the statute for the word damage. So you're going to read the statute as a whole and you're going to try to give all the words in that statute their plain and ordinary meaning.
So with that, a note, I'm trying to find a way, I understand a catastrophe of a catastrophe, but this is the deal, natural disaster is described in the, in the, at least from reading, a natural disaster is described.
So the definition of calamity is provided and calamity means a disastrous event, including but not limited to, so it's a non-exhaustive list, to, including but not limited to fire, earthquake, flood, tornado or other natural event which significantly affects the assessed value of the real property. And, oh, go ahead.
So, so not, not being a scholar of the law, but, you know, I'm figuring a plain understander of it. That's why I'm figuring on this thing, natural events, when he gives a, there's a definition, fire, earthquake, flood and other natural events. So help me come to terms with the fact that a pandemic is a disease, not a natural event. So if, and that's why I wanted to ask you about the term black letter. Because black letter to me is simple language and the simple definition is a disease versus a natural disaster, which is distinct.
So I think that's a great argument, Commissioner. And the argument is that what I hear you telling me is that all of the other examples within that list are forces of nature. Earthquake, fire, flood, tornado, those are all forces of nature and different in kind than a pandemic, which is an infectious disease. However, it may, it is natural, but it is not of the same kind or exactly similar to the other examples in that list. It is also not mentioned within the opening scope, the intent stated by the legislature, which talks directly about these things, lists all natural events, or excuse me, all forces of nature. These things happen in this state a lot. We need to give property tax, we need to give property tax relief for such events. And so that, that opening statement of intent is also something that's, it's a part of the statute. You have to give all words their, their meaning.
So, so this is not an issue where it determines what the meaning of is is. This is basically what's clear.
I'm sorry, say that last part again, I was laughing.
Should I read it clear and not take it into my own words, like what the meaning of is is?
So the best I can say is I would say that the, this board has to decide what, what is a calamity and does it include a pandemic? That is one of the things this board must look at today. And the statute is a non-exhaustive list. It does say including but not limited to. And that means we intend it to include everything listed here and other things. And then this board will have to decide, does pandemic fit in there? And looking at the statute as a whole, looking at the legislative intent, do you consider it to be, do you consider the pandemic to be a calamity? I can't give you a black letter answer because they, the legislature, I don't have a specific example in that statute that is exactly like a pandemic. And so this board has to make that decision. Is pandemic part of a calamity?
So it's not, it's not illegal if we determine?
No, you may make that determination.
Commissioner Morgan?
Teresa, I greatly appreciate all the work you've given and my time here and opinions. This, the word calamity is something that causes damage or distress as far as that, or disaster. I think what we're seeing right now across the country is way more than any flood, fire, earthquake, hurricane, whatever, affecting everyone. And we're seeing it all over our city. Certainly in the, all parts of the country as far as the vacancies and what's taking place. It seems to me that what we're seeing is a calamity. And my feelings are to keep listening today to others that may speak. But to me, this is far worse than any of us. And I'd like to have somebody come up and tell me they've seen something as bad as what we've seen in the last four months, five months since it started in March in their lifetime. I don't think we could find that person. So I'll continue to listen, but I certainly feel that this is a calamity and has caused much stress. And I'll even use the word suicides, mental anguish and depression without question. And I can even speak for myself and say that I don't watch as much news, but I'm positive that this caused me to have some pretty down feelings about what I see occurring in our country. So I thank you for your comments today as always.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
And thank you, counsel, for that and for your memo yesterday, helping us. This is kind of new territory for
It is indeed. The statute came into being, as this board knows, last year, and it was a result of the historic flooding that Nebraska had last spring. So this is, there is no case law on this at this time.
I appreciate it. I have, for Ms. Hall, possibly another question or two between her and Mr. Ash, just relative to the, to the list of 425 properties that I, that I went through. As I saw this, there was a taxpayer requested Form 425 value. And in many of these, there was no taxpayer requested Form 425 value. And so if I'm interpreting this right and I have the form here, the assessor has a valuation, the Board of Equalization has a valuation, and then asking the taxpayer based on the estimate of the destruction of your property, what's your estimate? And in many of these, there was, there was no estimate from the taxpayer. I mean, what's the effect of that? Does that just leave it up to whatever the Board of Equalization determines?
Dan Ash?
I'm a little adrift. If they haven't requested anything, what are we talking about here?
Well, Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk, I hear you. The form actually doesn't ask for requested value. But most, most folks included some supporting documentation that, you know, said what they think either the exact value should be or what percent, percentage they thought was damaged. But I suppose if someone just filed the report, they just did what the minimum requirement and hope for the best, I guess. I mean, I, I wish I had a better answer for you, but that's
Okay.
But yeah, I guess it'd be up to you to decide then what, what was damaged, which I guess I don't know how you do that without them giving you more information.
And, and I see this form, which was produced by the Nebraska Department of Revenue. It's not our form. We're just doing what the, the state has, has required. Does not have a, you know, an area there where you can say, okay, and I think the damage has resulted in this value for my property, which seems to me to be kind of imperfect. I mean, the, the form should be a little more specific relative to if we're talking about one number and you're talking about another number, what's that other number? And, and maybe we, along with this kind of legislative confusion relative to what's a natural disaster, the form needs to be rectified relative to what's your damage? I mean, that's just a standard question in the law. If you came to me and said, you know, my car was wrecked or I, you know, I slipped and fell or my house burnt down, what's your damage is an absolute requirement. And I, I guess I'm failing to see that in many of these cases.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I would direct you to the first page of the 425. I agree, Commissioner Kavanaugh, that it doesn't ask that specific question. But it does ask in the middle of the page for protesters to attach supporting documentation, including any photographs, reports, damage estimates, repair estimates, insurance documents or other documents you wish to be considered by the county board and making an adjustment in value. And so it does ask for that supporting documentation. And hopefully that would show this board the harm and thus what the board should look at in reducing that value. But it isn't asked in that form.
I, I see that, but it results in, you know, in this list before us. And, you know, I picked off the top 12 where there was significant variations. And five of those had NA, no answer, because I guess they felt that they weren't asked. I mean, some of them have very specific dollar amounts. And some of them have 20% reduction, seems to be a kind of a standard response. But many, many of them have NA. There's just no, no ask. And it would seem to me like in the Board of Equalization process, separate from this damaged property thing, many times the, the property owner is coming before the Board of Equalization and say, you said 100,000 and here's my proof and I'm saying 80,000. Isn't that kind of the standard case separate from the 425 thing where we actually do have a variation in numbers?
Dan Ash, County Clerk. Well, so on the real property valuation protest, you are asked for a specific requested value.
There you go. Okay, well, that might be another thing that we need to, to fix on this 425 process. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, Teresa, you might be the one or so as I read 425 and the instructions that are listed on the back of the page that was, application that was provided to us. And then I look at the information, assessor notes from the 43 properties. And then I look at the information, assessor notes from the 43 properties. So, um, again, I'm trying to figure out, uh, I guess definitions, if you will. So dismissal means failure to adequately identify the destroyed real property or not describe the damage may result in dismissal of the report. And then as Mr. Goodwilly read, significant property damage means damage to an improved exceeding 20%, blah, blah, blah. So I look at the 43 properties and as I'm going through those, alls I keep seeing is, um, information about income or, um, some say no income or expense data provided. So as I'm reading these, I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, what's the damage? Nobody talked about or are supplying what the damage is of the property. So again, if you're looking at, um, natural disasters such as tornadoes, floods, fires, you would be able to place that percentage of damage to that building if it was hit by any one of those natural disasters. You may also, I guess, could provide the income and expense information, but the law, the LB 425 is really only looking for the damage to the property. Is that correct?
So my answer's going to be probably longer than you, you want. So, uh, this dovetails into what Mr. Goodwilly was saying. Uh, and that is, does this board consider damage to be a physical damage? Or do you consider it to be abstract? Catherine Hall let this board know that all of the properties before you are commercial. And it's my understanding, none of them have physical damage. And Mr. Goodwilly, much better than I, can explain the valuation method often for commercial property is an income valuation method. So if you were a hotel, for example, you would often look at the income stream in valuing. Or if you were a, a property, it was rented out. You'd look at the income stream in valuing that property. And so I noted also that it's, uh, the notes by the assessor's office are no income information provided. So the, the taxpayer is alleging no physical damage. They're alleging it's harmed us in our valuation method is income stream. The assessor's office saying, you didn't tell us what your income stream was. So it goes back to what Mr. Goodwilly is saying is how was this board see damage? Do you see it as a physical harm or do you see it as abstract? Can it be that loss of income stream? Uh, I mo- I noted before, and in that context, I will note again, if you look at the first page of the Form 25, the documentation that the, um, state has suggested might be appropriate and could be attached, all seem to imply, except for the other document, other document, all seem to imply a physical damage. Again, it says photographs, reports, damage estimates, repair estimates, insurance documents and other documents. Absent the other documents, those all seem to be like a physical damage sort of, uh, situation where you, tornado came through, tore down half your building, you submit your insurance documents. So that, this is a decision the board is going to have to make, is how do you view damage?
But again, I guess my last, um, I guess I'm trying to figure that out is if you look at significant property damage and the means to it, those three, they do not list or say anything about, um, loss of income or revenue. So that's where I'm trying to say, we, even if we did decide that was the damage, it wouldn't apply because none of it applies to what the law says we can apply it to. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Let me, uh, try to say on, uh, value of property. And any bank will tell you that, um, the income stream on that property, they don't even come out necessarily to look at it. If they see that you've got your office building 100% leased and they look at that, that's going to have a lot to do with them deciding to make the loan on that property. Uh, if they know there's a lease there, that definitely affects the value. So if you own a center, and I'll give you the one across the street from, uh, my office building, and it's my buil- building's not retail, but across the street it is retail and you have Old Chicago and others in there. Goodwill Industries is in there and so on. If you go back 10 years, 12 years, the rent on that property was prob- and we don't manage it or never have, the rent on that property was 18 to $20. And it was 100% leased. Today with what's happened, it probably could, you could rent it for $12 a foot. And if you told me you need 12,000 feet, you can move in tomorrow. If you need 5,000 feet, 3,000, whatever, you can move in tomorrow. If you're a buyer and came to me and said, I'm thinking of buying that, I'd have some concern about you making that purchase. And I don't mean to pick on a particular property because I'm not sure when you're going to lease it. If you go out to 131st and Center, again, I've never managed it, never had anything to do with it. It's on the north side of the street, just east of 132nd. And I was a licensed appraiser, not only by the state, but by a national organization for many years. Gave it up when I became mayor totally. But the fact is, you go out to look at that center by Stoiches Sausage to the east and in that area within a half a mile, you probably have somewhere around 50,000 feet vacant. And I'm not counting the ones they've tore down, the Orchard Four and that strip center and others. That land's all vacant. And you're seeing that kind of situation in those areas. That's almost worse than if you'd had the fire because you still got the building and no one wants to be in your building. So the income stream and having leases is a big factor because if I told you I have a lease with Union Pacific for 30,000 feet and they're leasing for the next 10 years or HDR at Exarban, that's a real safe kind of investment. Now, maybe if you had Hertz, it wouldn't be as safe because they filed bankruptcy, which none of us would have ever thought could happen in our lifetimes. You know, Hertz rental cars. So that really is a factor. And I think the assessor's office would tell you, yes, we do look at income streams because that plays a big part in the value of that property. Because if you want to sell it, you look at the cap rate. That if I give you a million dollars, I'm going to have an 8% return a year, which is $80,000 left on the table and that's my return. Well, today investors looking at shopping centers, and I know from the national groups of JLL, who I work with in Chicago, they don't have an office here, Fred Schuler. They want retail centers, the investors now to have an 11% return if they're making a purchase because they are so nervous about what's taking place with Barneys who went bankrupt, Neiman Marcus, who is maybe planning. That's what they're telling their buyers and telling their sellers, probably has to be at 11 cap rate, which is unheard of. So I'll answer anybody's question and I stand to be corrected, but this is an area that I do have a knowledge in.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwilly, I want to ask you a couple of questions that you can cite the statutes on. It'd be great.
Sure.
No, I, uh, my, my question really is this. When, when you value, when your office values buildings, uh, commercial buildings and whether it's apartment houses or commercial property, can you talk a little bit about vacancy rates and how that affects your valuation?
We do, Commissioner, uh, as to follow the thread Commissioner Morgan brought up, yes, we care about, uh, we do an income approach and we care about things like vacancy rates and we think, care about expenses and, and, and all of that.
Right.
And in fact, uh, I would anticipate us having to look damn hard at income producing property for, for, for 2021 as this thing spools out throughout 2020 and you start to have one or two or even three quarters worth of, you know, diminished income and increased expenses and all of that, uh, due to the impact of the virus. But what I would say is, that's not what the legislature wrote. The legislature wrote that the calamity has to cause significant property damage. They defined as damage to improvements or damage to land. So the answer to your question is yes, when we value income producing property, we certainly care about that kind of income stream information. But what we're talking about here today is the calamity causing significant property damage as the legislature defined it.
I, I agree, and I was trying to interrupt you. I, I, I appreciate that. And what I'm really looking at is whether or not, uh, on, on another level of fixing the valuation of a, a property, let's say, for example, Old Chicago down in the old market. Now that's, they, they've, I don't know if they've bankrupt or what they are, but they're closed. And, uh, they didn't have any flooding, no calamity according to the state law. But when they come in, whoever owns that building now, when they come in, they're going to say to us and to you, they're going to say, listen, this thing's vacant. Been vacant for the last, you know, I don't even, it maybe even started before the virus, but it's been vacant for five months or something and the income stream is, you know, zip. So that will, that will, on another, looking at it from that view, it would be, it would affect the valuation, I would think, not the calamity part.
No, at, at, at some point down the road, and, and, and the reason we're having this discussion is, statutorily, property gets valued as it exists on January 1, and that's the basis for the assessment until the next assessment year.
Yeah.
The legislature added this exception, um, basically because it didn't feel appropriate to continue to tax somebody based on a value when the flood had taken your property three counties down, you know? But in this circumstance, so that's why they, uh, wrote this particular bill. And they define signif- significant property damage in the way they did to deal with the impact of the sort of typical natural disaster. And so in this scenario, when what you're talking about is economic loss or financial loss, what has to happen then is, uh, we have to gather that data, as much of that data as, as we can, and look at it for the 2021 assessment year.
Well, even, even earlier, I mean, I understand what you're saying and I agree with you. But I, I, I think there's, um, uh, after, after we look at the calamity part of it, I mean, I think the financial loss could be a calamity too, but, and I think most people do. But, uh, we look at this, uh, you know, what we're talking about first is this physical damage to the property. But I think on another, another perspective, we, they can come back and say, hey, listen, I know the economic loss, uh, totally shut us down. We didn't have water up to the ceiling, but we had no.
Commissioner, we would encourage people to bring us that information.
Good, okay, thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
So counsel, um, just back to you real quick. Um, and I appreciate the, uh, opinion that you gave us, um, which it seems to go in, in kind of two tiers, you know? What's this national disaster? And they say this and this and this and this, but not limited to that. And so that's a determination that's kind of a little bit open. And then it's, and, and what's your damage? Back to that damage question. And I just wanted to, to, you know, go over your, your analysis for us a little bit, where, um, you're a good lawyer because it begins with, does this qualify? And should we grant some of these? And it says, you might. But then, uh, at the end, um.
Commissioner, if we may, I, I, I don't believe it's a, um, maybe the best to be reading my opinion in the open session.
No, 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 I'm just trying to get to the, the legal basis that we would rely on, which is your opinion, that, that we should be conservative in our application of the language in the statute, which is this two tiers, is it a national disaster and then is there damages? Which would lead us to say no to all these 425, uh, protests today. And, you know, that seems to be based on what I can see that you advised us and, and I, I can imagine as well, to lead to an appeal of some of these decisions. And that's, that's kind of where I'm going with this thing. So if we say no to everybody today, based on the legal opinions that we've received from you and others, what are their appeal rights relative to these protests?
So, uh, for the 425s, the destroyed property, they have the ability to come back before the BOE, should they choose to do that. And as Catherine Hall mentioned previously, the process you used last year was then you had a referee also take a look at it and provide additional insight and recommendations. Should they be dissatisfied with the determination of the BOE, they can then appeal to Turk.
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 So that's the remedy if they do not.
Their immediate remedy is to come back before this board. They have a right to appeal to the BOE. Then the BOE issues a final decision and they can go to Turk if they're still dissatisfied.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to piggyback on that for, before my other two questions was, if they come back to the BOE, does it have to be done before August 10th? Because that won't work.
No, the answer is no.
Okay, all right. But then again, I guess I'm still strugg- I'm still struggling with, um, even though income affects the value, um, that is not addressed anywhere within 425, the Form 425.
That is correct. So the, the question I think that's before the board, the first is, is does the pandemic fit in calamity? And then you'll need to ask yourself, if it does, then you would ask yourself is, can the damage be abstract? Can it be non-physical? And I think there's arguments that Mr. Goodwilly has put forth that it is physical and there's some, there's wording in the statute that implies that it's physical damage. And then if you, if you were determined that it could be non-physical, then you need to be looking at each and every property and saying, um, does this property show a nexus? It has to be the calamity that causes the damage. So did, was it the pandemic that caused the damage? And then did the damage exceed 20%?
Okay, and, and with that, I mean, if I'm looking at some of the information or the last assessor notes, I don't see where that would, um, apply to any of these that have been set forth to us. So that's, again, um, I, I, I don't see how we, we determine COVID as, um, as a natural or a, um, what word am I looking at? Is the, um, damage or causing the damage as it relates to 425? If we do, then I think we need to go back and have the law changed to specifically say such a thing and change what those significant property damage means. Because again, I'm not seeing how we address the issues that are on the sheet with the requirements set forth by Form 425. The other question I had was, what, what, the way I'm looking at this is that the 43 properties that are before us, those would fit more within the PPP program of the federal government's program for, uh, businesses and their losses. I don't know if they, they did or could take advantage and possibly.
And they may have, we wouldn't know.
There will be, you know, additional dollars for businesses is what I'm hearing. So anyway, I'm just struggling a whole lot here with fitting this into, um, what we have before us as, and I know law isn't black and white, but as we have black and white, how this is fitting into this for, uh, Form 425 for us to be able to grant, um, to grant these. And then my last point is, or question is, can someone, is this form, again, it's a deadline that they have to have by such a date and then we have to have it approved by, um, you know, this Board of Equalization process? Can somebody come in that didn't know about Form 425 and come next week and file? No, Diane shaking her head, no, no. Okay, so it's deadline specific?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
So Mr. Goodwilly, I might need you to come. This, this is my question. I'm, I'm trying to get there, but, um, I'm a little bit in Commissioner Borgerson's world. But let me ask you this, the income method.
Yes, sir.
So say you would, because looking at these, I don't see a lot of information on the income piece from a lot of people, but. So July 1, I mean, Jan- So, July 1, I mean, January 1 is the cutoff date.
You bet.
March was COVID.
Uh-huh.
All of their issues are going to be, all their income-related issues are going to be related to income that ends January 1, 2021. So, I guess my question is, is this a relevant question this year? Is it more of a relevant question next year?
Well, I, I, I think it, I think you're right about that, it's more of a relevant question next year, because at best, there would only really have been one calendar quarter where you might see a diminution in rent rolls or an uptick in expenses. But what this bill was aimed at originally was, you know, a natural disaster that occurs sometime between the 1st of January, you know, and I think July 15th is the date they have to file their claim. You know, so if a tornado blows through in May, or the flooding that came last year, you would be aware of it, you'd be able to take pictures, you'd have made your claims, you'd have been able to substantiate your damage in some significant way. In this scenario, the claim is, is for lost, basically lost profitability, lost income, and the best you would really have available from, from that March window would be the, the second quarter of, of this year. I'm not sure how much conclusion, you know, an appraiser could, could draw from that candidly, but, yeah, you'd, you'd really have one quarter of income and expense information when the COVID is going sort of full bore.
And I just ask that, because I'm, I, because I know the, the pandemic is-
No, that's a fair-
Catastrophic.
That's a fair question.
It's catastrophic, and I'm trying to get there, but every road seems to be blocked because there's not a property report, then there wasn't income submitted, and if you want to lean on the income method, it really should be pertinent to 2021 instead of now. And I'm just trying to work this out publicly, because I'm, I feel, I feel the catastrophic piece that they're saying, but all roads lead to a block.
Sure, the, the Form 425 process was aimed at, at property that suffered significant property damage, and, and I think the legislature was talking about flooding and tornadoes, which are the usual kind that we get. The genesis of this goes way back to, I think, 2005 or '06, when the little town of Hallam got scattered to the four winds by a, by a tornado, and another concern was, you know, is it really fair to, to pay taxes on a value on property that existed one way January 1, but by a certain point had been scattered among the four winds? And, and so, I think that's why the legislature chose to define significant property damage as damage to land or damage to improvements. And so, the short answer is, this is really kind of trying to jam a square peg into a round hole, that, that, as much as you might feel for these property owners, this doesn't really qualify under the 425 process because there isn't physical damage. Now, that said, you know, by the time we get toward the end of, of this year and start thinking about value for 2021, we're likely to have two or three quarters where if you're a hotel, your occupancy rate may be significantly diminished, or a, a commercial property where the office space or the retail space hasn't been leased out to you, to, to previous levels. That information we would be interested in, but that would be to value the property for 2021.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Morgan.
In that statute, I think they talk about the damage may be abstract, not direct.
I'm not, I'm not sure where, Commissioner, but okay.
And then, they use the word calamity, am I correct on that?
Calamity is the causative event. In other words, you have to have significant property damage that's caused by the calamity. So, even if you took the view, as, as Ms. Yuric pointed out, even if you took the view that COVID-19 fit the definition of calamity, you still have the damage piece that has to be satisfied. Did it cause significant property damage? And those terms are defined in 77-307 as damage to land or damage to improvements, not the damage to the profitability of the land, or the profitability of the improvements, but damage to the land. And in its plain and ordinary sense, damage to something most logically means physical damage.
And I know we have some attorneys here, and the lady that spoke earlier, I've never met before, to my knowledge, or used her firm, to my knowledge ever, and I don't have a property in this situation, so I can speak to it indirectly, but I think they said damage or calamity in that statute, and Teresa, I'm not sure where, oh, there she is, I think it uses the word or calamity, am I correct on that, Teresa?
Teresa, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, and so, I'm going to direct your attention to 77-1307 where the definitions are, and what it says is that significant, the short answer is, is no, I, I don't think it has that or in the place that would, would lend itself to that interpretation, but 77-31307 has the definitions, calamity is, has to be the cause of the damage. The damage means significant property damage, doesn't say intangible, it doesn't say income, it says significant property damage means damage to an improvement exceeding 20% of the improved assessed value, damage to land exceeding 20% of the parcel's assessed value, and then there's a third category as well, which I don't think is before this board today.
Okay, I thought the word calamity was used in part of it that somebody sent to me, there isn't that word calamity.
Yes, calamity is the event that causes the damage. So, this board has to decide, all of the, all of the property protests today are commercial, and they're all COVID, there, there's, that's the only calamity that people are alleging, they're alleging COVID, the, the pandemic, they're alleging that is the calamity, it caused a reduction in value, it did, they're all alleging it caused a reduction in value, none of them are alleging a physical damage, and then, even if the board were to agree and say, yes, I think COVID is part of a calamity, yes, I think damage can be non-physical, then it still has to be more than 20%.
Okay, so now, what I'm going to say is, if calamity is a word used in that statute from the legislature, calamity's definition says damage or distress, okay? If you look up distress, what distress is, it causes extreme anxiety, sorrow, or pain. I think that I can safely say that this COVID-19 has caused extreme anxiety, sorrow, or pain, and when you see hotels, and I'm not involved with any hotels, the hotels that have been closed down by CHI for months, the Marriott, for example, and that's in-between time, no different than they had a fire there in April, they would have been closed, or March, it would have been closed, because of this calamity and distress, they have anxiety, sorrow, and pain because of the virus, they had to close that hotel for months.
Can I, can I ask for a point of information, Mr. Chair? Is your, is your definition, the dictionary definition or the one in statute?
I'm using the dictionary, because I'm not smart enough to-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure-
Be able to do it in all ways, I just try to go by the old dictionary, because I'm old, right, Mike? I said, well, I'm old, you'll vouch for that. Don't be too nice. So, that's where I'm coming from, but I think, you know, again, I'll stress, I'm not an attorney, but that's my simple mind, that to me, this has caused, for everyone, extreme anxiety, sorrow, and pain without question.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
What I'd like to suggest is that we take a look at the legislative history, which will have the testimony of the, and the comments of the state senators who put all this together, the thinking behind it and all the rest, because obviously, there's a lot of, of kind of hybrid definitions we want to place, and I don't disagree at all with them, but I don't know that that's what the legislature intended. And I think one of the ways to find out what they intended is to read the legislative history, so I, I think what we have to do is take what we see at face value, excuse me, and unfortunately, I don't think it includes loss of income, I think that's going to have to be another appeal if they already made one, but it doesn't cover this, this calamity that is envisioned by the state legislature, I don't think it did. I think it's material where the land isn't useful, or the water's up to the ceiling or whatever, but it doesn't include loss of income because of a pandemic, I just don't think it does, as much as I'd like it to. So, I think what we ought to do is look at the legislative history, see what that says, at least for future reference, it's too late for us to do it for this, but I think we ought to go ahead and move on.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I was actually on the same lines as Commissioner Boyle here, but I did want to point out, and this may not be the exact wording, but I don't think it's an or, Commissioner Morgan, I think it says as a result of a calamity, not or a calamity. And then, calamity defined, again, it, it's defined as an event causing great and often sudden damage or distress, a disaster. And so, I, I think we do need to look back at the intent, and again, I doubt that the intent included a pandemic, because back when they did this, there was no such thing as a pandemic, but, again, I think we need to look at that, I do like the idea, or not the idea, but the information that we're really looking for is, would probably be more appropriate for these properties to come back in 2021 to talk to us about their, their value reduction in the normal process, not through LB, or not through Form 425. And, and so, I too agree that, I think we just, we just need to take what it is at face value, what the information we have, and look at that intent, and if we feel we need to ask the legislature to amend it to include such a disaster or a calamity as a pandemic, then I think we should do that as a legislative initiative, but for now, I think we take it as it is and move forward.
Commissioner Morgan.
That suggestion, are there any citizens that want to talk only to 425?
I will get to that as soon as the commissioners are, are through speaking. And I think the commissioners, I, I see no more lights on, everybody's spoken two or three times on, on this subject, except for me, and, and I'll try to be brief. The law was written for, you are not the timekeeper. This law was written for physical damage, being a farmer who's gone through two floods in the last decade, I get it, and I never qualified, even a year ago, we, we didn't get to plant a crop last year, we had extensive sand damage, but we didn't have 20% demunition of the value of our land, and so, we never applied. 20% is a high threshold, but to take abstract damage, every business in our community is impacted by COVID, including farming, prices just went down the tubes when COVID hit, there's no more ethanol being bought, corn's sitting around everywhere. I don't think farmers can come in and claim damage on a 425 because of COVID, I don't think any business can. They've all suffered damage, there is a means to address that long-term, I mean, for a farmer, if prices go down, eventually, farmland's going to go down, and eventually, things will equalize where they ought to be, and I see the same thing happening here. I don't say that these businesses aren't entitled to a, a reduction in valuation if they're, if they're losing money based on their, their income approach, that's the approach that they need to be following, not a law that was written for physical damage and trying to stretch it to cover something it was never intended to cover. That's where I'm at, thank you. Now, having said that, I will open up the floor to anybody that wishes to share any comments with this board before we take action. This is your opportunity, Sean.
I'm not ignoring you, Michael. Sean James, Law Firm of Smith Slusky Law. I want to go back to this focus on calamity meaning a disastrous event, and I would like to tell you, I, not personally, but Jerry Slusky in our office did talk to the originator of this bill, who did intend it to include things beyond just physical, yes. I think when you get into the legislative history, you will find that it was intended to cover more than just a flood. 20% is a high threshold, and if 20% of income is damaged, that affects the assessed value of the property, something that they didn't know on January 1. So, damage, I don't think is restricted to the property value damage, I don't think you need a tornado to come through. If you have damage to the assessed value because of the income approach, and your income is shot in March this year, the way to come back is through the 425. So, if we take the 425 form to mean exactly what it says, the calamity is a disastrous event, even the president said it's a disastrous event, this is a state of emergency. We won't go down that road. And damage to the value, the assessed value of the property is impacted significantly, so I would urge you to go ahead and approve it for this year as well. This is the year that is being impacted the most, hopefully, it gets better next year. And I'm feeling, I'm feeling snickered at. I do know some of the properties that are in here, the Baird property, I have provided some additional information on, so you can see that the income is being impacted significantly. I'm not going to go into great detail on that right now, but you may take a look through that and see that it is showing there is damage to the income of a property solely because of the, the COVID situation. They had two tenants left out of the six spaces, two, and one of them is not paying. So, in that situation, I would urge you to consider the 421, or 425 form as a means of addressing the dire circumstances these owners are facing, thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like to, everybody's spoken two or three times on this subject, I still have commissioners wanting to speak again, but I'm going to ask, can we not even go five minutes, try to keep our comments brief, I'd really like to move on to more of the meeting, Commissioner Boyle.
Who is the state's-
Sean?
Who is the state senator?
I didn't get the name from Jerry, but I-
I'm going to, I'm going to be very brief, I, I just wanted to ask whether or not, in light of what Mr. Goodwillie said, whether or not these sorts of appeals, I don't have a problem with defining them as you are, but I wonder whether these aren't more appropriately dealt with as a loss of income, just, I mean, obviously, a vacancy rate where you're down to one paying tenant is pretty dramatic, and you certainly would be entitled to relief, that's, I just think we ought to, I don't want to see us get, have you get sued or some crazy thing over what you're trying to do, and based on what we could do-
Right.
-with the income approach.
Yeah, no, the assessor's office, unfortunately, their hands are tied to that January 1 valuation, and as Mr. Goodwillie said, the really impact of this did not start until March, so the only remedy for our clients and our, our property owners is the 425 right now.
This calamity is widespread, so what do we do with the other people that are not represented?
That are not represented, or that did not file?
Or that have not contacted you or others to represent you, represent them, I mean, and this is a widespread, you know, is anybody here for the Old Chicago downtown, you know, that's thing, I, I don't know, I don't think so, I don't know what caused them to close.
Right, right, well, I do know that a couple of these names on here are not represented by our firm, and I don't know about Mr. Mullen, but they obviously filed it on their own somehow.
And I, and I'm not saying, what I'm really trying to get to quickly is that I'm just concerned about, this calamity really involves everybody in the community, I mean, even homeowners, so, I mean, come on, who've lost income, they're in the same mix, so, I mean, it's a terribly widespread calamity, and I'm just concerned about, I don't mind giving you the relief you asked for your clients, not at all, but I'm so concerned about the others who didn't show up.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
Confirm this, this year, if somebody was going to make the income claim, would they be making it on, you make the income claim, like, say now, if somebody's making that case now, did they make the income claim on 2019, or did they make the income claim on 2020?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking that at all.
For instance, well, let me give you the timeline, January 1 hits of 2020.
Sure.
From January 1 till middle of March, wherever you do- From January 1 till middle of March, wherever you do, person comes in, people come in, they make their protest, saying, I don't think the number should be here before you send it out later in the year to make it the final piece.
Sure, they come in for their preliminary meeting in January and February.
When they make their case at the preliminary meeting, they don't come in in February and say, I want to make an income base based on 20. They make their income argument based on 19.
Sure.
Okay. So somebody's that's making the income base, and I just want to, somebody that's making the income base on something that happened in March cannot claim it in that same year in June? Can you make the income argument then?
In a normal protest, you probably can't, simply because the January 1 assessment date applies. And so the argument for most protests is over what was the worth of that property? What would a willing buyer pay a willing seller for that property as of January 1? Now, the folks making the 425 claims are providing stuff basically post-January 1, and the argument that they're making is, you know, COVID is a calamity, and therefore we should be entitled to 438 or 425 relief. To answer a question.
So my point is, it's a 425 claim based on property damage, which they are none.
There is none, no.
And since there is none, you have to make it on the income argument, which what they're making. But they don't know the total effect of the income. Because if they're making on the income argument, it should have been made on '09. You don't know what your income effect is this year.
I would respond to that in two ways. First, we don't think it applies because there's no physical damage. But second, yeah, the income information that they would provide would be post-January 1, 2020.
Okay, thanks.
If I may, one other item. Sandra Erdman was the senator that was the sponsor of this bill. And it's nice to talk to him after the fact and say, well, what did you think, Senator? But what's more relevant is what they wrote. And what they wrote was that significant property damage means damage to improvements and damage to real property. And they did not write that it includes damage to lost income or lost profits.
Well, if it helps you, and there's no disrespect to Steve Erdman, but having to spend some time with him, I know he wasn't thinking of a pandemic when he wrote it.
Well, I'm not going to editorialize about any of the fearless 49.
I can say that because I know him.
Down in Lincoln, but that's fine. I think my boss has a remark.
Good morning, Diane.
Good morning, Diane Badiato, Assessor, Register of Deeds. I just want to, Commissioner Rogers, you touched on a very good point that I would just like to clarify for the board in maybe terms that I know for me and for many of you might be more easily understood. Residential valuation and commercial valuation are two different types of processes. In the commercial arena, when we value as of January 1, we are asking for the previous year's profit and loss vacancy rates, everything they look at for the previous year to arrive at a full year's view, sometimes two or three will ask for those profit and loss statements, to arrive at a value for that coming year. We are not disputing at all that COVID is a calamity for everyone, not only in our community, our state, our country, in our world. But as it aspires to relates to financial damage and not personal property damage, this would be more in tune, like Commissioner Roger has mentioned, come the end of this year, when we start valuing and talking to people for 21 values, 2021 values, we are going to be looking at the entire picture for 2020 going forward to 2021, not just a portion of the months. So we don't have the picture, and 2020 values were based on 2019 income streams. So I hope that clarifies a little bit more, so.
Thank you. Chris, did you?
Sean, I just want to know if you know, Sean, if these properties that you're representing, did they file for the PPP program?
I do not know specifically on each of those properties, but I would also point out that the PPP program was more targeted towards the payroll of the individual employees. So to apply it to this, I would question if it's appropriate.
Mr. Musso, one of our referee coordinators.
Chris Musso, coordinator for the BOE. I just thought I would want to not try to muddy the waters, but just get something out there that should be clarified, as it seems that interchangeably, we're talking about real estate and real property. Real estate is land and building. Real property, which a 425 references includes land building and the entire bundle of rights, which gives you those rights to sell, lease, rent, use however you want. So it does bring in more than just the land and building. And I'm not trying to make it more difficult than it is, but that is the true definition of real property versus real estate. They are not the same.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification. Further comments?
Sean Mullen.
Good morning.
12829 West Dodge Road, Suite 100. On the issue of the 425, I think there's two questions, and I think the county attorney did a great job of framing it. And I think maybe some of her frame got rejiggered a little bit, so I just want to go over that. There's two issues here. Number one is the pandemic a calamity? Did you have a calamity? And the second issue separate apart from that is the valuation issue. You know, on the calamity, Diane's already acknowledged that it's a calamity, that COVID is. And it's the source for all the angst that's going on right now. And I think what we really, I'd really ask you to consider is that we have a timing issue for the homeowners, for the property owners, homeowners, commercial, everybody. It's how do I get from here to the other side of this thing? Commissioner Ferguson, you asked about the PPP. There was no PPP relief for a property owner. There was some PPP relief potentially for some of their tenants, but you have to make an assumption that the tenant, A, got the money, and then they decided to pay the landlord. It's really an economic issue, and I think we could talk about income. I mean, to the, I mean, the impact of the COVID has impacted the income stream of these properties. And we can talk about income, but don't forget to think about the capitalization rate, I'll call it the cap rate, that's applied to the income of the property. I submitted some of these 425s, and I provided a broker's opinion of value from JLL in Chicago, a very, very reputable national firm, on properties where they did a broker's opinion of values and a capitalization rate at 1231 and at 630. And this was on retail property between 120th and 132nd and West Center Road. And the cap rate in their opinion of value in that period of time, as a result of the COVID, went from 8.8 to 10.25. So we can talk about income, and that's clearly a part of it, but there's more to the calculation of value than just the income, and the capitalization rate's a big part of it. And I will acknowledge to you folks that three, if we say that COVID starts, Commissioner Rogers, you indicated COVID starts in March, we'll go with that. It's hard to take a snapshot of three or four months and make annual determinations because we are in uncertain times. We are in times that nobody in this room or this town or this country has ever been in. And right now, we can, with hindsight, it's been here for five months. We have no idea when it's going to stop, when it's going to be over. And if you read the paper, Omaha's the largest city without a mask requirement. Omahans have to get quarantined to go to Chicago. I do focus in the food and beverage business, the restaurant business, they still don't know if they're going to be viable. So I would ask you to consider, and the 425 is the tool, it's the mechanism to get these property owners some relief. I had a conversation with a hotel client, and I explained to him the process, and I said, if this doesn't, I said, we're going to try and get some relief on the 425. If not, maybe we'll get it in 2021, you'll get relief down the road. He said, we'll be out of business by then. This 425 is a mechanism to help the property owner get from here to the other side. Sean James early talked about Jerry Slusky's conversation with Senator Erdman. I had that call with him also, and he said specifically, the pandemic was the type of the thing that would be included as part of the definition of a calamity. You can't expect this, you never see legislation that has all the exceptions. We talked about it was, the way it was written, it was kind of open-ended. He said it absolutely applies to this. And we talked about the genesis of the 425 and the statute that was enacted a year ago, and he said it was largely related to the flood. And he said, you know, a lot of that ground is still here. The damage was done to it and took things out of service for a period of time, but it impacted the property, but the property's still around. So it wasn't necessarily long-term physical. It's not a fire. It's not a tornado. That ground that got flooded is still here. It had to have some sand removed, et cetera, et cetera. So he said, that's why it applies. And I guess I just wanted to give you that color. The valuation issue, Commissioner, due to your comment relative to your own personal experience, the valuation issue is a different issue. And the Form 425 that Commissioner Kavanaugh talked about, no request for value. I fully understand this is a little bit of a new process. The forms might not be great, but they are what they are. And my experience a year ago is after we filed 425, the assessor's office called me and said, hey, do you have any some information on this? Can we talk about this? So I think that the valuation question is yet to be answered, but the issue of whether or not the 425 applies, I sure hope you consider that the fact that I think it does and it should, because we're in uncertain times that calls for uncertain measures. And we've got to do what we can to get these property owners to the other side of the river, and then we'll be back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. What is the pleasure?
I'm really just trying to understand. Would you come back for just a minute? Because point to me or walk me through out of the sheet, one of the properties that you're representing, which one, because there's so many of them that say no data, limited data or whatever. So walk me through one that you could change my mind and help me understand your point of view.
The very first, the first line on the first page, parcel 2532185016, also known as 12411 West Center Road. And as the sheet points out, the assessor had a value of $2,087,000. The current BOE was a May 928, and we're asking for a million 669840. And we provided financial information and including the JLL opinion of value with the cap rate of 10 and 1/4. That's how we did our math. So we gave you the information. We provided the information with our appeal.
Okay.
That's one. I can give you more.
Okay, thank you.
I'm ready to get to move on. I'd like, but this, now I'm getting confused because the example you show does not show a 20% loss. The loss that's being requested is less than 20%. So how can that, how can that qualify?
It was a reduction from the $2,087. 20% of that is $400,000, $400,000 less from 287 is 1,687, and we're asking for 1,669. So we meet and exceed the 20% threshold.
All right.
And we get there because of the cap rate change per the national real estate folks.
Okay, thank you. All right, what is the pleasure of the board? They didn't answer. I mean, no answer. It wasn't, none was provided.
So they're just out?
Well, that's our decision.
Commissioner, in answer to your question, NA in that taxpayer requested line.
Right.
Means they didn't request any number.
So what would you do if you were sitting on this side of the desk?
You know, that's a hell of a question, because often, because often the people that didn't request a number didn't provide any backup either. And so I think in those scenarios where people didn't have a requested number and they didn't provide any backup, I don't think you have any, I don't think you have any other option but to dismiss the, you know, the form to.
If I may, Mr. Chair, on Form 425, then down at the bottom or the middle of the page where it says, it's got a box which suggests that it's optional, attached supporting documents, including photographs, so you're saying that is mandatory, it's not optional?
It's optional, but look, how the hell are you going to know if the property sustained any damage if you don't provide any backup, especially in a scenario like this where the damage isn't physical?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I understand, but I do think there's a, I don't mean to say it this way, but I think there's an element of someone being truthful. I mean, short of swearing them in when they come to the podium, you know, I mean, I think I trust who's talking. They wouldn't be here.
Commissioner, you know, I think, I think many, many, many taxpayers are truthful, but in my experience, I've dealt with more than a few that haven't been. So what's the expression, trust yet verified? Well, the backup is, well, the backup is the verified piece.
Okay, okay. I get you. Okay, thank you. I appreciate your opinion very much.
Come back?
Chris.
Chris, yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to tie together. I'm pretty convinced, but you said something about land, you said something about land, property and other stuff in the real property definition.
I'm sorry, I got to take my class off.
You said the real property definition. Say what it is again.
Real estate is defined as land and improvement and building.
No, that I know. Yeah, that would be, I'm assuming that would be a regular homeowner or whatever.
No, that's anything. That's the Woodman Tower.
Okay, anything.
I mean, it's, you can physically put your hands on it, much like Mr. Goodwilly was alluding to, that's what he was looking for damage to. Real property, the definition is expanded beyond that to include the entire bundle of rights that go along with that, that allow a person to do something with that property. Part of that ability to do something with the property extends onto the legal side, such as zoning. You can't put a bar on a residential zoned lot, but you can on a commercially zoned. So there's just, there's more parts to it. And why I brought that up is because the ability to do something with that land, rent it to somebody else, put a building on it and rent it to somebody else, or even just renting the land, is a way to create money, income, value to the real property. And it says destroyed real property, which includes those intangibles that you can't necessarily touch, like the sticks, bricks and the dirt. I'm not trying to make a legal opinion here.
No, no, I'm still, I'm trying to, you know, but it's still.
I would leave this up to your law department to make that determination, but the clear definition between real property and real estate are too different. And real property includes real estate.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. My instinct tells me that this is, I want to see this, I can see it, but I can't see it this year. Because everything, it feels like they're mixing, it feels like they're mixing worlds. They want, they want, they want, no, and they want the property tax approach mixed in here with real property stuff. That's what I'm, that's what I'm feeling. It's not clean.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
If I, if I may, Commissioner, Mr. Musso is right, is that real property includes more things than the bricks and the sticks. But if you read on, destroyed real property means significant property damage, which is further defined as damage to an improvement or damage to land. So while in the general sense, Mr. Musso is right, that real property encompasses a lot of things, in the sense of how this statute has been written, the kind of damage that can invoke relief is damage to an improvement, damage to land, not damage to the right to sell, not damage to the right to lease, not damage to any of that bundle of rights that Mr. Musso is talking about. And I have the greatest respect for Mr. Musso, but he didn't quite read far enough.
Well, no, I'm not reading the 425. I'm just telling you the difference, definition between the two. And I said, leave it to the legal department, not me. I'm not an attorney.
And I appreciate the dispute.
I just thought I'd bring it up.
Somebody else wants to?
I do, Teresa York County Attorney's Office.
And I'm not with the new system. When I want to speak, do I press, I'm looking at Dan, sorry. Do I ask? Do I press a button? What do I do? Okay, okay. Throw something. I love the new system. Should I say that? I'm sorry. Okay. So I would agree with both Musto and Mr. Goodwilly. And to just elaborate on what Mr. Goodwilly is saying, the definition of real property is at 77103. It has six subsections, okay? And when they wrote this statute about, um, destroyed property, they only, they did not take all six of them and incorporate them into what is damage to property. They only took a few of them. And so when we look at that, we say, oh, there are more, there are more parts of the real property statute. The legislature on purpose didn't cut and paste all of them. They copied a couple of them and moved them, moved them over here into this new statute that tells us what damage is. And so I agree with Mr. Goodwilly and I agree with Mr. Musto, that Mr. Musto's saying real property is larger. It is. But for the definitions of this statute, they didn't take all of real property. They took some of it.
Thank you. I, I hope that we can wrap this discussion up soon before we waste our entire morning on one item. Not waste, excuse me, spend our entire morning. What is the will of the board? Commissioner.
Frustrated, I know, Mr. Chair, but this is so new that I guess this opportunity to have this discussion is, I guess I'm taking advantage. But to your point, so if, I guess this would be to Diane, um, the assessor or to Mr. Goodwill, Ms. Badiato or Mr. Goodwilly from the assessor's office, to your point. Say that we as a board did say the pandemic was a calamity. And you provide, just take that one, the first property that you talked about. Mr. Goodwilly or Ms. Badiato, with that information that was provided, the board says, yes, that the, this fits, the definition. But then does the information provided by Mr. Mullen and the request of Mr. Mullen for the value fit?
If I, if I may, no, our, our stance is that the language of the statute requires physical damage to the property. So if you want to decide COVID is a calamity under the law, you could. But we still don't think they meet the threshold for significant property damage, which is damage to land or damage to an improvement.
Okay, that, that's, thank, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Commissioner, could I respond to that? To the, to Mr. Uh, Musto's comment, it's the bundle of sticks. And it's more than the brick and mortar and on the, the definition of, of the real property. And, uh, the, there's, there's, to the, to the extent that the tenant's been impacted and the tenant has disappeared to the old Chicago who doesn't open for five months, that impacts the, the value of the property. And like I said, this is a mechanism to get the property under some relief and just get them to the other side of, of a once in a hundred year event.
Thank you. Is anybody going to propose any action?
Wait till, we're going to be doing this again Monday, and I know you're appreciative of that, Commissioner Duda. But, uh, could we lay it over till Monday and somebody reach out to the state senator? Or do, what do you think? I mean.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, I know Steve Urban very well. I have his texts and I just, I just sent him a text. And I said, Senator, Douglas County Commissioners are considering Form 425 claims. Does it include damages caused by COVID? Is COVID a calamity under the law? And we'll see if he responds, but I did send that to him. And, um, but I, I, I think what I would like to do under the circumstances is that there is some pretty good evidence that it doesn't and there's some feelings that it does. So anyway, I think the minimum that we ought to do is that we ought to allow the people who are on this list that it says NA, the minimum that we should do unless we're planning to reject the whole thing, is to allow them to complete the, uh, supporting documents. We should tell them if you really, if you're sure, it's, it's an error that can be repaired before the, I don't think it's, uh, I think it's important we give them that chance. So anyway, all of these that say NA, I think we, they're, as far as I'm concerned, they'd be out. So in fairness, I, I think what we ought to be doing is telling them, you better, you got to answer that. It's not optional. I think that's a minimum. But on the other hand, if we're going to be rejecting all of this, then let's not have them waste their time. I don't, I don't know if I'm in favor of postponing it. I think our minds are made up. I know what you're saying. But if we're going to reject all these, uh, we probably ought to just get it over with.
Depends on what you want to do.
If I'll make a motion to reject all of them. See if you get a second.
I will second rejecting.
All.
Declining all of the 425s.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office, I believe the recommendation of the assessor is to deny all the 425s. And so you could make a motion to, uh, follow the recommendations of the assessor and deny all the 425s.
Well, I'm not in favor of that, but I, I mean, I don't know what else to do. I think that's, that's what the board.
I appreciate at least getting some discussion going, getting a motion on the floor.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll put it on the floor then.
All right, so that is your motion?
Yes.
And I will second that. Now, comments to the motion.
You don't want to wait to hear from the state senator then?
Well, I don't, I don't know, will, will his comments carry enough weight to say, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, in my opinion, it's a calamity.
I hear you. I just wanted to ask, if you texted.
I mean, I, I, uh, it'd be interesting to see what he has to say, but.
I think, again, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, I believe it was stated earlier that what's more important is what was written in the statute than what comments were made later. Our office did take a look at, it was several months ago. We did look at the legislative history when we were having discussions with the assessor's office. We'd be happy to do that again. In, in so doing, again, I would remind this board that if you were to deny these 425s, they all have the right to come back and appeal to you all again as part of that process.
No, we're done Monday.
And Catherine, I don't know if we had any people appeal last year. And we, I don't, I do not recall, but that is available in the process.
Commissioner Boyle.
Ms. Ulrich, let me ask you, is there, if we, turning all these down, I mean, there are other options for these taxpayers to, uh, make a claim. Isn't it whether it's under a, you know, just a, another generally reduce my valuation because all the buildings are vacant, appeal? I mean, they can still do that, can't they? Not talking about.
The 425.
425, yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, Mr. Goodwilly brought up that they have the right and the ability next year to, uh, when we review the property value next year, to submit all of, all their documentation for 2020 and argue for a lower value. So there is another opportunity for them to do that.
But next year is too late.
Next year though, they would, that would be the normal course of business for the assessor's office to review the 2020 valuation, which would be income approach for commercials.
Commissioner Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But, but, okay, so, but Teresa said there's still an opportunity, just say we reject the, or go with the recommendation of the assessor and deny him, and Mr. Mullen would have the opportunity to appeal to the Board of Equalization. That, but he has to appeal by a certain time, i.e. Monday?
May I, may I speak, uh, within 30 days of the notification? That's, so will, will we date the note?
Okay, I see heads shaking back there. Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
So basically he'll, he'll have, anyone who wants to protest a decision made today will have 30 days to protest it back to us.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Boyle.
His, his appeal would have to be on the basis that, uh, the filings that he made or the taxpayers make under this 425 are valid. I mean, he can't go on to bring up, uh, loss of rents or any of that other stuff, can he? Or can a, can a taxpayer do that?
I, I would, they can't bring up loss of income after January 1 because they're only focused on January 1 for once the 425 is settled, I believe. I shouldn't be giving out legal advice.
Well, I, I would like to hear too from some of the people who file these, these, uh, these requests to, you know, whether or not we ought to, you know, if they were on this side of the desk, what would they do? But it sounds like we're headed for a rejection because of the, you know, we don't have clear language about the COVID being a calamity.
So if I understand the question, sorry, Teresa York County Attorney's Office. So if I understand the question, I think it's can they supplement the record? Are you asking, can they supplement the record if they could bring back the appeal? Short answer, I don't know, but I'll take a look at that and I'll talk to Catherine Hall about that to see if they can do a supplement of the record when they come back on their appeal.
So if they supplement, could supplement the record, which seems reasonable, then they could bring up other.
If they can supplement the record, they could provide you additional documentation. And I don't, and again, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Dan Esch, county clerk, and Catherine, you run up and cut me off if I'm speaking incorrectly. But I think we've always taken, for any protest, we've always taken, uh, you know, because a lot of times people will see things that they didn't think would come up the first time around. They want to retort why our, you know, initial recommend, or approval was incorrect in their mind and they'll provide additional information to try to prove that. So, uh, I don't see a protest to the Form 425 as any different to any other protests we've done. We've always accepted additional informa-, I mean, we, you may disagree that if it's a valid additional, additional information, but we've always accepted additional information when you file a protest.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Further questions or comments to the motion? Okay, I would like to call for the votes.
Okay, so the motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda to dismiss the reports of destroyed real property and maintain the current valuations.
Okay, the assessor's recommendation.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm having a hard time.
Commissioner Rogers. Okay. Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We're already halfway through our resolutions. The second and final resolution, set the 2020 real property valuations for protests that were, were reviewed by the Douglas County Board of Equalization and its referees. What I would like to do here procedurally, uh, is if we, I'd, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the package as submitted. And, and once we, if we have that motion in the second, we can, if there are any individual properties that anybody would like, uh, attention to, they would be handled as an amendment, as a separate vote for an amendment for any individual properties. But then we will table the motion until Monday because we're going to continue this meeting on Monday. Not all of the recommendations are in yet. The referees are going to be scrambling all weekend trying to wrap this stuff up. And so we are not ready, will not be ready to take final action until Monday morning when we continue this meeting. Okay, we have a motion to approve the valuations. Do we have, I'll second it. Okay, so now that that is on the floor. This would be the appropriate time if somebody wants to consider any individual properties, now would be the time to do so. Commissioner Rogers.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I got to, I want to make sure what's, what's in the, is in, are the properties in the packet, are those specific properties that were appealed during the period? Not, it's not everything there. It's just what's, just what was appealed. So if somebody per se called me, um, and they missed the time, they didn't appeal, it's not included in this property and you can't really do anything? Is that safe?
If I understand your question correctly, Dan Esch, county clerk, you're saying somebody, I'm probably just repeating what you said. But someone, someone did not file.
Basically, we had the, the protest period.
Right.
These properties include everybody that may have protested and that properties are changed from what was originally sent to them in the mail. This is everything that was changed, right?
Right, so.
So if they got it sent in the mail and they didn't protest, their value is not included in here?
Yeah, you had to have submitted a protest.
Okay. So then my next question is, say for instance, and I need to know if it's legal or if you need to wait to another term. If they did not, there's really, is there nothing you can do now? Because it's not listed in here.
You know, the only, well, I, I should.
Well, just somebody give me a head nod.
In, in general, no. I mean, there's, you know, we, we take certi-, certified assessment corrections, you know, like in previous years, but that's.
So my only, then my only other question is, a couple of years ago, the assessor's office started bringing stuff back under some new thing of corrections and stuff. So if somebody had an issue, they, and they thought it was a mistake or correction, it could end up coming back and could be addressed.
Commissioner, if I might.
Okay.
What you're referring to is something called overvalued, undervalued property. And that window is open during the same window as BOE protest time.
Okay.
And we use that because what we discovered is even after we had done preliminary meetings with people, somebody, there's always somebody that doesn't get the word, right? So our phone rings in March or April and says, hey, I, I want to come in for an appointment, but I never made one. And we think you've made a mistake on our property. And we would look at it and if we discovered that we had, we would put it on this overvalued, undervalued list to do a correction so they didn't have to file a protest. The time to do overvalued, undervalued expires on August 10th as well. So, so what might be left, if you have somebody that didn't file a protest, they could certainly reach out to us and under some limited circumstances, we could still suggest a change to the board. Clerical error is, is a good one. If we transpores a number, data, enters a data.
Wait a minute, Mike, I, I understand that, but I'm, that piece I understand, but the overvalue, undervalued. I swear I've seen those come through outside of this time period. There's been, because that seemed like it came through.
Commissioner, I think you're mistaken, but.
Okay, if I see one, then I'm going to know it out.
Well, no, that's, that's fine. What, what we do periodically are certified assessment corrections.
Okay.
Throughout the year. And those certified assessment corrections tend to be instances where, say, a property goes from exempt to non-exempt or the other way around, or we discover a clerical error, a data entry error or something like that, that plainly needs to be fixed. But the, the overvalued, undervalued vehicle we use during county board time as well.
Okay, so this is my last question only because I think I'm there, I just need to be able to explain it. So there were these, these meetings you, that were, had to update. At the beginning of the year, um, I had a discussion with you all. That discussion basically kind of said that in North, there were undervalues because we were at about 93% of the value for the county. We needed, what, what, what is the, it's 92 to 100% where we need to be. We were at about 93. That was my understanding. And we needed to go up to meet state standards.
For, for this year. Yeah, for this year, we got a little bit above that.
Okay. Some of the areas that were undervalued, one was North. So I remember having a meeting and saying, you all should expect an increase because the market's been hot, we're under. There's a whole, the question I've gotten is about a whole row between Cummings to Hamilton around Nicholas, a whole row of homes that are some, that are just, they were in 210, $10,000. For the next four years, they went down to 600 land value. And now all of them have jumped up to 20,000.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, I can go back and tell them, there may be an option. It's a slim option. I don't know if it's clerical or not because it's just universal up a row. When I look at the numbers, it's just universal.
I'm, I'm thinking if it's universal on a row, and are we talking about land value or the total value of the land plus improvements?
It's land value, it's a little improvements, but the land value specifically on all of them.
See, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if maybe somebody did, if we didn't reappraise land value in that part of town.
Well, yeah, somebody can give you an answer.
Which would account for, which would account for everybody kind of getting the same thing.
Well, yeah, because all of them are in 2010, $10,000. Then for about five or six straight years, they had six, they had $600.
Okay.
Those six, yeah, basically like that. And then, let me, let me read, and then they go. And, um, and then they all go up to approximately about 20,000. Okay. Yeah, basically it's, okay, this is how it runs. 2015, $10,000. 2016, 600. 2017, 600. 2018, 600. 19, 600. 2020, $19,700.
All right, all right. I, I, I can't say that for, I can't say for certain what's happening there just from what you're reading to me.
But I can recommend that they can come in and talk to you.
Have them at least give us a call. And, and if there was a reappraisal done and that's what the. and that's what the data we had shows, then that's what we did. But if there was some sort of data entry or clerical sort of thing, that would be something we could bring back and correct.
Yeah, and if not, I just need to, okay, then I got, thank you, thank you.
Diane Badiato, Commissioner Rogers, to add to that, to your comment and to Mr. Goodwilly's answer. We have had some calls in that stretch of property in North Omaha, and my residential managers did confirm, we did a reappraisal of that area and we are aware of the increase based on some of the sales in the market area, not necessarily just on that block. But we have to take into consideration with mass appraisal, the whole picture of the sales market area based on that, the exuberant market and the sales that we have to go by. So we are aware of that situation. We have to talk, we have talked to several of those property owners. But as always, if they are not happy, they can always call us again and we'd like, we'd be glad to meet with them or discuss their, their concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Just so I understand, Chris, what you asked about something else. If you didn't find, and Dan's still here, I think, Esch, if you didn't file a protest, I don't think you can come to the Board of Equalization like Monday or today.
Right.
If you didn't file a protest.
Correct.
Is that correct, Dan?
That's all, no, that's all I'm making. I got it, I'm good.
Okay. PJ, do you want me to answer something?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was speaking to Mr. Mullen. I, I didn't hear your whole question. I apologize.
Just real simple, if you didn't file a protest, you know, you're just sitting at home now, you're hearing this, and you wanted to come here today and say, hey, the value on my home's not right. I bought it for 100,000, you got it valued at 200, and I bought it six months ago. You can't file, we can't do anything on that because there wasn't a protest filed. Is that accurate?
It is.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any amendments that any commissioner would like to be proposing? Now is the opportunity to do so. If not, we may be ready to adjourn.
I have, I have some valuations which I wish to bring up. They're, they are... Did you pass out those sheets again?
I'm doing so right now.
Okay, great. Uh, this is, um, and more of Catherine Hall's excellent work. It's an alphabetical listing of the properties that have been, the landlords that are represented by Mr. Mullen. And there are some others in here that are going to be pending from Mr., from Schwab Realty and so forth. And I guess we'll have to work on those on Monday. But I would like to call these up and, and we can see what valuation, you know, we would approve if we, if we want to change anything from the assessor. Could I, so I would like to begin calling these. I don't think it'll take a long time. I think we can go through them if we can have that done. These are landlords that have suffered losses.
I heard.
High vacancies and so forth.
Okay, so you're probably going to be proposing about 30 amendments here?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, well, the first one I would, if I could, I'd call up is 124 Center LLC, care of Mr. Attorney Sean Mullen. Pardon me?
Commissioner Burgerson.
So Commissioner Boyle, are the ones that you have, did we just not do these with the 425?
No, they, these are not 425, I believe, these are, they, they happen to be, I, I guess some of them were, they were probably trying to be made under the calamity definition that didn't, we didn't buy on the 425. And so these are being protested initially. I think they were protested anyway as a request to lower the valuation just because of economic conditions and what's happened to them. If we could take a couple of them, see how it goes. It could go relatively fast, I have a feeling.
Question, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes, Mike, it, it appears that the top 17 are what we just did. They are 425.
Yeah.
Things. The top 17 with red dots next to them, Form 425 total value requested, we just did that.
Well, we did, except that we denied them, but they are also, they were presented originally, I believe. I'll let Mr. Mullen describe it, and then if, if you feel that it's a duplication or that it's, we already decided them, that's your decision. But I believe he presented these as a request and valuation due to economic conditions, not the, under the 425, but as, as, as under the other where you've lost, lost income.
Let me mention something that I think's helpful, Mike. For example, if you turn this over, I know this is a home that Simmons...
Right.
I mean, so it's not a 425 for sure. It's a residential property. I just turned it over and took the top of the list, and that's a home that...
Red dotted at the beginning on the front page as...
Well, the same thing's true on the back page.
But these are Form 25 value requested properties that we just voted on.
Mr. Chair, may I jump in?
Why not? Mr. Clerk.
Or I'll let Catherine, I'll let Catherine, excuse me.
Catherine.
Yes, so again, this is just, this was a tool for Commissioner Boyle to follow some properties he had expressed interest in. This is a, this document is a tool for Commissioner Boyle to follow some properties through the protest process. But that's correct that, the list groups them essentially by agenda and then alphabetically within that. So all the first items that have a red asterisk next to them, the value was determined last week by the board regarding the valuation protest, the step one. And item B, the item the board just voted on, addressed the property damage portion of those. So all the items with a red asterisk have been addressed by the board in two separate actions, one last week and one this morning. And the items below that, that correspond with item, either item C, are the items that the board is addressing now. And then I've denoted whether the other items have, had a pending recommendation by the referees, so those will presumably be on next week's agenda.
So I guess, are you asking for a third part on those items?
No, here's what I'm trying to say. I passed this out last week to everybody with the highlighted. It had nothing to do with the 425 filing. It was not a 425 filing. These are, if you, if you, I can read just one of them to you. It says, the third one down here, which is Westwood Plaza on South 125th Avenue. It says it's retail, 33% valuation increase from 2019 to 20, asking for prior year's value. So that's what these are, and whether or not it has a red X and been decided on that issue, that's in the past, that we rejected that. Now, what he has prepared for us, I believe, and I'll, sometime he'll get to speak, the ones that he sent to me, that I handed out to you, the reason they are being challenged is because of loss of income or because of the valuation that they feel is out of whack. So that's what he's bringing up today, I believe.
Okay, and, and you want us to consider each of these individually now?
Well, we'll see how it goes. Just let him start speaking and we'll see. If we are going to reject these, we do, we could happen with, you know, we could get to the point pretty quickly, I think. I mean, the tax payer has a right, he's representing landlords who, who need help.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office, if I understood Catherine correctly, and she can correct me if I did not, the very beginning of this list on page one with all of the Form 25s, it was a dual filing. And so the protest was already heard and already voted on, and the BOE value in the sixth column was already set. And so there is nothing unresolved before this BOE for these initial dual filings, where it begins with an unresolved matter. If you look at the last column, and it says 8-7, item C, that is the beginning of unresolved items for the BOE, if I understood correctly. And she's shaking her head yes, so... I think we would begin with items, the, the row that has the very first 8-7, item C, as denoted in the last column.
And I wish I could open my computer and I would try to look that up, but that's an item on the agenda, so...
And I'm looking at the handout, I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyle, I apologize. I should have said what document I was looking at. It's the handout that Dan Esch just provided us. It's, it states that it's to Commissioner Boyle from Catherine Hall. It's dated August 6. That, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay, well, so I don't, this is item B, which is on the, in agenda, correct?
It is, but that's the 425s, which were denied.
That's what we just settled.
And so...
Here's what I'm saying, though, he has appealed this, if I might. The first thing I got was this, and it'd be good to let him speak, but I believe this is what he wants to appeal, are the valuations based on being too high or loss of rents. And so that's what I believe he wants to talk about, and that's what is on the agenda. So that it is a dual, you know, I made the motion to reject it based on the calamity, to get that out of the way and to proceed with the request that he made a couple of weeks ago that I passed out to everybody on the county board. And so, for example, I, you know, as I told you, the first one says, let's see, there's, it's awfully small print. It's, let's see, here we go, there's one that says Montclair Village 129, 29 Augusta Avenue. And it's asking for, it's a retail 30, or excuse me, 12% increase to evaluation in 2020, asking for prior year's value because of economic conditions. Could we please hear the representative of the landlord to make that case? I don't think, I think the fact that he lost on the calamity doesn't prohibit him from bringing this up on another, another possible relief.
And so I would agree with that, but, 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 it's already been heard twice. So it, it was heard on the 429, and I don't think that precludes it from coming back. But it was already heard on the, on the value as well at a prior meeting. And I believe the board already lowered, let's look at the very first row, 124 Center, 12411 West Center Road. The initial assessed value was a little over 2 million. I believe the BOE already heard the valuation protest and already lowered the value. And so I think both, it's, these are dual filings, but both filings have already been addressed. And Catherine is approaching the podium, and I will let her take it from there.
Okay, so how should, how do you think he should proceed? Can he, can he represent the landlords on any basis, or where does he start? In the middle of the page, or what are you saying?
So I, so I think if, what's, what's before this board for resolution today is starting in the row that has, looking over at the last column, if you go down that last column, we're looking for item C, and that item C begins the matters that are still pending before this board.
Right. Mr. Mullen, do you agree with that?
Yes.
No, I don't. Sean Mullen, no, I don't. In, my understanding of this is that we had two filings. We had filings based on a 1-1 valuation, and then we had a separate filing, which was evidenced by the Form 425 for properties that had further reductions in valuation as a result of the calamity, the pandemic. So my understanding is that what has happened today is we've resolved those items that were filed on the 425, which is for a post 1-1 activity. Anything prior to 1-1 should still be in play. And if it isn't, I was never notified. And I am in contact with Dan Esch kind of on a regular basis to stay on top of this because as a taxpayer, it's, it's hard to get information as to this process. And I want to make sure we didn't miss anything. But in my understanding is, any valuation I have in play right now that we've appealed to the BOE based on 2019 income numbers is still in play.
And I'll defer to Catherine, sorry, Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I'll defer to Catherine, but I believe the board voted on the valuation protest on the dual filings at the last county, regularly scheduled county board meeting. And the only thing open on those items impending today was the 425s, but I'll defer to Catherine.
That's correct, this Catherine Hall, that's correct. And I just wanted to issue the disclaimer again that this document was a tool, so any typos, the official documents are those that are set up on the agenda and available to the board. So these were just a tool to monitor these items as they progressed, but that is correct. The, the board has an opportunity to take action on two items related to these parcels. One is the destroyed property report, which the board just took action on, on the item before, the item under consideration. And the other was a protest, a property valuation protest that was filed. And that action was taken by the board on August 4th, a determination on those recommendations by the referees. And if you recall from the beginning of the meeting, there's a subset of those properties that fall under both categories, and so the board has to take a two-step process to make, to take action on each step and each protest that was filed.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask, was any, did Mr. Mullen get any notification of that? Did he get notification that was going to be heard?
So...
No notification?
Well, may I, so clearly, I must not have articulated myself very well, Mr. Mullen, but I did try to tell him that the protests were for, for the duly affected properties, you know, one that had a protest in a Form 425. And it sounds like I could have done a better job explaining it, but it was, it was, it was Tuesday. I tried to tell him Tuesday was going to be the protest. Today was going to be, Tuesday, August 4th was going to be the protest. Today, August 5th was going to be the Form 425.
Okay, well, I, I didn't know that these had already been considered either. I mean, in that whole maze, you're talking about the pages of all that stuff on the BOE, it looked pretty routine to me, but he was not notified, which is the case I don't, and this stuff about dual things, it's already been decided that he, they don't qualify for 425. Put that in the past, it's gone unless he wants to do something else with it in the future. However, these valuations that he has gave to me quite a while ago, and I passed out to everybody else, and I, he has the right, I think, to speak on behalf of his clients. There, there are landlords out there who have, who need to be heard. And I, I frankly think that, I was, I didn't know that they were considered on that. Had I known that, I would have called him immediately and said, this is on the agenda. And he had called me, and as I mentioned to you, that he had called and asked me the date when this would be heard, and I checked, and it was going to be today, because he had other legal business. And so that's why he fixed his calendar so he could be here today. And had he known, I know that he would have been here earlier, and had I known, I would have told him. So I don't mean to, we can't cast blame anywhere, but I think in the interest of fairness, we should hear him talk about why these should be handled today. I, I just don't know what else to say. Somehow we need to come out of this. And I do have to say, I think this leads to and highlights the folly of the BOE. I mean, this is really a disaster. I've complained about it for years. This one is the worst I've ever seen it, not because of what's going on at the personnel, they're working hard, but this is not manageable. We have, referees are still working on information over the weekend, and we're going to get it Monday morning and have to vote on it Monday morning. That's not, not a good job, but it's not, no one's fault, it's just the load. But I think it ought to be heard, that's what I think.
Commissioner, if I may, Teresa York County Attorney's Office. So this was an action taken in a prior meeting. I think if the board wanted to entertain a motion to rescind the prior action, and then if that passed, then bring, bring this back up and take it up on its substance, the board could consider doing that.
Okay, I'd like to ask, what was, what was the decision? We denied them all?
No, you set values, and I don't have those.
It was a combination of changes and dismissals.
Well, I think we need to maybe go through those and show which were changes and which were dismissals. Maybe he would like to talk about even the changes, but would someone take the time to do that?
I can, I can pull up the spreadsheet from...
I would like to make a motion to reconsider that action then, and I assume I was on the presiding.
And so if I may, I apologize, I think it's a motion to rescind. I'm not a parliamentarian, but I believe a motion to reconsider is made in the same meeting and requires you to be on this prevailing side, but a motion to rescind is made in a subsequent meeting. And so I think it's a motion to rescind if the board would so, wishes to entertain something like that.
I think in fairness to the, to the taxpayers, to the landlords, I would make a motion to rescind. And I think it'll go much more quickly than this has, actually. I think he's prepared to make statements about all of these valuations, so I would ask indulgence.
Mr., Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Clerk.
I'm sorry, I, thank you for letting me interject so many times, but I would prefer that we only do, again, it's your call, not mine, but I would prefer we only get to the motion to rescind if there seems to be some consensus that we want to change something we approved on Tuesday. Because if we do the motion to rescind, we got to redo it for all of them that we...
Okay.
I mean, not individually, but it redoes everything for that we approved on, on Tuesday. And so I'd rather, if we're going to do that step, I'd rather we make sure that we actually agree that we want to actually change something, if I'm making sense.
May I interject? Why don't, why don't we say we want to rescind only those that are on this page then? I don't know why we'd have to rescind the entire action.
I suppose we don't, that's a good point.
Let's, let's just rescind the ones that are the landlords who are represented by Mr. Mullen. Is that the correct word, rescind?
I think it is.
Okay. Well, that would be my motion. I think Mr. Morgan, Morgan seconded it. And we could, once we get through all these manipulations, I think it will go pretty rapidly.
So everyone that has the word Mullen on here is getting rescinded, all of those that have somebody else's name or not?
Oh, let's see, unless they come up. I believe so. I mean, he doesn't want all of them rescinded, but he isn't aware of which ones because he wasn't involved. I don't know anything else to do. I had no idea.
Commissioner Morgan, did you...
I did second.
All right, Commissioner Burgerson, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, but of the first, the 17, I think I counted right. So, but of the first, the seventeen, I think I counted right, where the red dots are, that we had just done for the Form 425, the argument would be the same, even if it's, even if we would reconsider now. So you just, you just take out Form 25, that's gone. But the argument, right, that you're arguing would still be the same.
If I could answer that, I'm sorry to interject, but it is not the same. For example, on the one that is, one says it's just asking for the retail, it was thirty, for example, the third one down on this list, Westwood Plaza, says it's retail and thirty percent valuation increase from 2019 to 2020, asking for prior year valuation, which is not involved in the 425. It's a, this is a separate issue. So I, I think we're talking this to death. I think if we, if we allow, if we allow Mr. Mullen to proceed to represent his clients and ask for a reduction in value that's unrelated to the 425 filing that was just rejected, this is another request on a different basis. It's that the valuation's too high, unrelated to any, any damage of any sort. Not claiming that COVID is a calamity.
Are you?
Is that okay?
Okay.
Well, again, I mean, since the, the person is before us, I would be okay with granting this. I, I think, I'm still not sure what the difference is, but it'll probably move faster if we shut up and let him talk, so.
Could I give you an example to?
I, I, we're, we're still debating.
Let me just bring up the top one, 124 Center LLC. What he has asked for, it's on this list that I gave out to you, 124 Center LLC, same address. It says, let's see, retail, twenty-five percent increase in valuation from 2019 to 2020, asking for a reduction to 1.7 million. And that's, that's close to what this was, I know that it was, but it's not exactly the same, but it's asking for a reduction. I, I just don't see the point in, it is different. We considered it on the, on the 425, we said, no deal, I made the motion, no deal. So now he wants to talk about the valuation, which is totally unrelated to the 425 filing. That was declaring a calamity or whatever, and that we said, no deal. So now this is a normal, normal request. Okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
Commissioner Boyle going with that, so it was assessed at two million.
I'm sorry?
It was assessed at two million. They're requesting 1.7, and they put them at 1.9.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's a separate request.
I know, but.
We can turn it down if you want to when it comes up, or you can.
No, I'm fine with looking at the bottom 11, but I'm kind of where Commissioner Borgson is because even on those bases, these have been looked at, and some of them are, most of them are, they've agreed somewhere close.
Well, he's, he's asking us on a different basis and different amounts. He's asking it because he wants the valuation reduced because he feels the valuation is too high, which is unrelated to the previous action we took, that it was a calamity, you know, so.
I'll agree, I mean, I'm saying, me personally, I would agree on the bottom 11.
Pardon me?
But, but some of these have, they look like they've had their day in court. And they, and some of them, they reduced.
Well, they had their day in court on another issue, though. This one is another issue. This is that the valuation's too high, simply that that's kind of the bread and butter.
That's my point, they had their day, to me, it looks like they had their day in court on that. And then they had, and then they're asking, with the matter we just solved was that they're asking for additional reduction on five, on 425. So we handled that. Because for instance, your first line, he went, they, they did two point, they did two million. He wanted 1.7. They put him at 1.9, and with 425, he would have been at 1.6.
Let me go to another one that's a little bit, quite a bit different. Go to the W down there in the list, W O C. Let's see, where is it? Okay, W O C LLC 22, excuse me, 21015 Cumberland Drive. His, he wants it reduced to seven million, four hundred, twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this on our sheet is recommended at nine million, nine hundred ninety-eight, nine hundred dollars. So there's a substantial difference. And he says that the owner user, the cost of construction of 7.4 million dollars in 2018. The DCA value is 9.9 million for 2019 and 2020, asking for a valuation equal to cost of 7.4 million. Now, that's another issue then, it's not the same issue that we already decided.
Well, I, I want to be fair, but let me give you an example. So the first one that you, that we did, that we read, the very first one at the top, okay. Then you go to, then go to Eagle Run, that which is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the sixth one down. No, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the fifth one down, sorry. Eagle Run, 129 LLC. You know, if he wants to craft this list a little better, that's fine. But for instance, for those, like for Eagle Run, he asked for 1.9, he wanted 1.3. They met him somewhere at 1.6. I mean, some of those, I'm not inclined to look at. I mean, they, they, they went, they went with him and gave him the reduction.
Well, then you can vote no when he brings it up.
Can I do something simple?
I think it's pretty simple now, but go ahead.
There's one residential property on this, okay? So to me, that would seem, and you interrupt me, but you got this Simmons property, 11125 Pierce Plaza, all right? And I happen to know that that home was built forty years ago by Bill Chapman. The fact is, it went, I'm not sure what the previous value was the year be, well, the previous value was. Sean, do you have it, what it was in nineteen?
I have it in my file, yeah, I can grab it real quick.
Could you get it? This property backs up to the interstate. And I happen to be in the same situation, so I know the situation. And I don't care what time you go, you can pick the time and the day, and you'll hear unbelievable noise, which you didn't hear thirty years ago for positive or forty years ago. I can also give each of you addresses, because I happen to know this, because I've had the calls, that you got property valued from a hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot next door to it, to the north, or to the south, excuse me, backing up to the interstate. And this property's at 235 dollars a foot with the new value. And Sean, you correct me, because I don't want to state it incorrectly, but that's what I get for the square footage and the value. I was doing that a little bit here when I saw it on here. My question to you is, what was the value in 2019?
A million, two fifteen.
So what we've got is basically, what?
We have a fifty percent increase on a house that's forty years old, fifty percent. It went from a million two to a million eight.
It's a fifty percent?
Yeah, fifty percent increase, the house is forty years old, the owner passed away almost six years ago.
I know the lady lives there alone.
Yeah, she's in, maintenance is not her forte.
Yeah, and it had a fifty, and Mike, this had a fifty percent increase over 2019 that you brought up. All right. I also know that the real estate market, if you're selling a $300,000 home or $200,000 home, is pretty hot. I also know that if you're selling a home that's a million dollars or a million eight, you can go see some on 96th Street and other areas that are, been for sale for over a year, even without the virus and haven't sold. And now with the virus, I think people are being a little bit cautious and with the interstate backing up and the home next door at about eighty, ninety dollars less a square foot and some others in the 172, 216, 202, I think this home deserves some consideration. My own home had a fifty percent increase in the value, which is a couple doors away. This home does have a swimming pool, and I know, I haven't been in it in many, many years, but I know she probably keeps it nice, and I also know there hasn't been any remodeling, that I've seen any trucks or anything except for lawn. It's my feeling that there should be some consideration. And I tell this to the commissioners, as I've said before, I don't know how many years they've owned it. I don't know when it sold before, I don't think it even shows. But I can show you homes in Regency that sold for a million one in the last six or eight years that now have never had a value of even 700,000. They were at 650, they went down to 619 without being protested in Regency. And that's kind of interesting because I still think it's a very, very nice area. So I think in looking at this in fairness, there should be some consideration. Commissioner Boyle, as to what you're bringing up, I didn't know it was going to be on your sheet. But knowing the property and the situation, I think there should be some consideration given to that. And it is at 235 dollars a square foot. And again, I stand to be corrected, Sean, by you or the assessor.
Could we, Mr. Chair?
I, I, I'd like to speak it. I've been waiting, trying to let everybody else to speak, but I, I have a fairness problem here. We're looking at one house out of 7,000 protests to give an extra level of scrutiny to. We aren't bothering talking to our referees that we hired, the real estate professionals, that said, this is what we believe it's worth. We're going to take a tidbit of information from the only representative here of 7,000 property protests. We worry if Mr. Mullen was contacted, did we contact the other 4,000 who have appeals on here today and say, if you want to come down here this morning, you might get a second chance, a second shot at the apple? I know what you were told, and I know how the process works. The reality is, many years ago, we, we always did give individual attention to every property until we got overwhelmed by the system and had to resort to hiring referees to represent us. Where I have problems is with a hybrid situation where, I mean, we don't even have recommendations back on almost 3,000 properties from the referees, and, and yet we're ready to start second guessing the referees without even talking to them and saying, no, you were wrong, this is why this needs to be lower. It's not, everybody's being treated equally. Yes, we have to give Mr. Mullen an audience, and, and no disrespect. I, I do have great respect for you, but we don't have to take action. We don't have to overrule what our referees have recommended to us. And when we handpick a couple of dozen properties out of 7,000 protests and say, these properties alone are going to get an extra level of scrutiny that none of you others get, that to me is not fair to the other 6,900 protesters that don't know that if they hire an attorney or if they show up here this morning, that they may get a reduction when we haven't even got all the referee's recommendations back yet. So, so I have an issue with fairness when we interject and however these got to our attention. However, these properties were placed in front of us, it still is handpicking just a select number of properties out of 7,000 protests to give special treatment to. And it makes me so uncomfortable because we are not offering the same opportunity to all 7,000 protests, and to me, that's where the fairness falls down. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I fail to understand your concern because people are on notice to do these things. And, you know, if you don't license your car and you forget about it, or you don't do anything, you get a ticket, and you know, they don't say, gee, we didn't tell everybody to, to do that. So, I mean, everybody, anybody who lives in this town, I mean, there's people who are really upset about these valuations, they know how to handle this. Last year, I was the only person, as same thing this year. Last year, I brought up three, three out of several thousand valuations. People didn't come down here, they can't get here on Tuesday, or whatever day this is, Friday. So the point is that only three people, and I was contacted, one was Casio's, who said that they had a, the place needed renovation and so forth, and we voted to reduce it. Another one was the Quinn family on Dodge Street, and that person was represented by an attorney, I'm not sure who it was. And they had a whopping valuation, and we reduced that by several hundred thousand dollars. The last one was a fellow named Louis, Lou Sully, S U L L Y. And he has a home that backs up to Mary R. Queen, and he's a physician's assistant, and he's someone I know. I mean, you know, I ran into him at my son's house, and he started telling me about his valuation's higher than anybody else's on the block, and I looked at it, and he's right, and they're all similar homes. And we turned them, we turned him down, the one resident. So this is not uncommon, Commissioner. We only had, only three that I brought up last year, and that was because they contacted me. I don't know why they didn't contact any, nobody contacted any other commissioners, but they were not, no one else was brought up. So I was given this list, Mr. Chair, and I passed this out to all the commissioners, highlighted what, I know you're not looking at it, but. I'm looking at it right here. Okay, well, anyway, if you got it, okay, that's good. No, that's, the yellow one, yeah, I don't think, I don't see it there. But anyway, I handed this out to everybody about three weeks ago. And I talked to Margaret about it and got it all lined up, made sure that I was following procedures because he requested to be heard. He's representing taxpayers who hired him. Now, I can't help it if I know people that, where I used to live, that their valuations have gone up substantially. I don't know if they, I don't know if they appealed or not, I haven't seen them on any list, so maybe they didn't. But that's, that's the responsibility of the taxpayer to do these things. So anyway, I, this is not irregular, there's nothing giving special treatment. This is, these are taxpayers who are asking for relief, that's the bottom line. And if you want to abstain from it because you think it's a deal or there's some mafia influence here or something, I don't know what you're thinking, but these are taxpayers who are asking for relief, and they're, they're represented by an attorney. And there's, there's nothing, nothing dark or strange about that. So let's, why don't we proceed with this, and you can vote no or abstain, and you've already claimed your dislike for the system. And I agree, this system sucks. It sucks. We haven't even got all the, all the properties before us that are going to be appealed. This has got to change. We can't do this anymore.
We're, we're in agreement there.
Yeah, absolutely, this has got to go. Let the assessor set all the values, and let her handle these appeals. Because we, we will lower these and she'll raise them, which is her discretion. She's, I asked the county attorney, who's in charge of assessments for Douglas County on property? The county assessor, period, okay.
Can we let Sean say?
I'd like, it'd be nice if we could just proceed, but other speakers probably.
Say what you want on this property.
Mary Ann, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh about this, but we're, we're actually like lawyers. We've, we started to talk about something, and look, we're off the subject completely.
We're not laughing at all.
So the process, I agree, it's, it's the best we can do. And we can go back and talk about historical perspect, the historical perspective of why we're here today. But one of the problems is, in our process, is we do not say that once the referees bring these to the board, that's the final. So they do have, in my opinion.
And we can't say that.
No, but that's what I mean. So we have a concerned resident or property, a person who's representing property owners that don't necessarily agree with what has been set forth. And we, as the elected official, the body, the Board of Equalization, I think have the job to listen to them, whether we agree or not. I mean, there were, I got calls too, but they were actually taken care of, for the most part, by the referee system. And they ended up being okay with, with what the outcome was, except for one. So again, it's, it isn't the perfect system. I think we have a better system because we actually do have professionals that are looking at these and telling us. But again, that does not just take away then our, I guess, responsibility of listening to the person who's before us as to whether or not they have additional comments they want to make to us where we may agree or disagree. So again, I know it's, it's a weird system and probably not the perfect system, but. So, again, I know it's, it's a weird system and probably not the perfect system, but, you know, Mr. Mullen, I believe, does have the right to come before us and say, hey, stop for a minute, relook at this one, and we can agree or not agree.
Do we still have a motion on the floor?
Sean?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, was the motion pulled back to rescind? There's no current motion on the floor.
Well, I heard a motion a second. I guess I don't know what the motion was.
It was to do what our legal counsel said, to pull back the decision that we made on these last Tuesday.
So that motion is still on the floor?
We have to do that, consider these, don't we?
So I think you have to do a couple, sorry, Trucey, our county attorney's office. I think you might have to do a few things to get these before the board. I'm looking at Catherine Hall. I don't believe these are on the agenda, right? So, you, and you've already, you've already passed a resolution on, on these items. So I think if you wanted to look at them today, the steps you would have to consider are doing a, I'm debating in my head which order. You need a motion to rescind that prior action, but you also need to declare an emergency and add them to this agenda. That would be the way to do it.
Now, you only talk about the ones with the red dots.
Yes, the ones with the red dots. The others are on your agenda for today. They're there. So it's the ones with the red dots because those were decided and the value was set on Tuesday. So you have already resolved all issues, and they are not on your agenda for today.
Right. The only trouble is, if I may, Mr. Chair, we didn't notify the council for the taxpayers. And the other thing is that this list was out floating around. I gave it to you a couple of weeks ago, and so they're all on there. I don't know what the problem is. And I, I don't go with this emergency motion thing. This, this list, if it's on the agenda, it's on the agenda. I gave this to Catherine.
So I believe there's a new, there's a new list for today's agenda. It's about half. The other half will be on for Monday. I do not believe in this list are these dual properties because these were already decided by the board, but I will let Catherine speak to that. And as far as notification, I think Dan spoke to that on Tuesday, and I would defer to him with regards to that.
Well, and I, you know, so when the media was around, I was kind of apologetic. But now that I've got a chance to look back at some of the emails I've sent out, I don't know how I could have been more clear about what was happening. If it was both a protest and a Form 425, the protest was being taken up on Tuesday, the Form 425 was being taken up today, I have it, looking at emails I've sent to Mr. Mullen and to the commissioners, I don't know what else I could have said.
Okay, well, let's, let me ask Mr. Mullen, just for laughs. Do you want us to consider the first bunch of these here that were originally talked about as a disaster kind of valuation? Do you want us to talk about those having a different valuation, which would match what you sent to me several weeks ago?
I would, but there are a couple that I could eliminate because through the course of conversation with the referee, I don't think it is worthy of our time to talk about them. So I could clean that up. And relative to Dan, to your comment and mine, my understanding was, I don't disagree with you, and we had emails going back Saturday and Sunday, and he did yeoman's work, so I just want to give him a lot of credit. But I think I asked him, I think what I got back from that was that the Tuesday action on, on these properties relative to the one, the 1-1 valuation will not be finalized. It wouldn't be finalized until Friday. That was my understanding. And we had multiple emails over, going over the course of four or five days, so.
Okay, well, let's take our legal counsel's advice and do what she suggested. What is, Ms. Yerick, what is the first thing we should do?
And Ms. Yerick, before you answer, just, just know on item C, there is a motion and a second on item C right now to approve.
Well, let's do those first.
I don't think.
To approve or to rescind?
Well, it was, excuse me.
There was.
So, now I'm, I'm going to muddy the waters even more, but the, so the, the, the Mullen, the red asterisk items that we want to take action on, they are not on today's agenda.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, before we even got to this, there was a motion and a second to approve item C, and it was going to get, it was going to get tabled to Monday to finalize. But I just want to make sure everyone's aware that be prior to.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
So let's just take those.
Those other items at the top were supposed to be considered with this group. If they were considered separately or whatever, that, I was not aware of it for some reason. I don't know, maybe it's my mistake, but I gave these to Margaret to be, or to Catherine to be handled all, you know, all together, and if they've been separated in some way, you know, the, it shouldn't have happened. So I don't know. You know, I just.
I have an easy way.
This is worse than it should be.
Since there's a motion on the floor for item C.
What is item C?
Item C.
The whole package.
The whole package. But Mr. Mullen has, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 items for item C. Correct, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And so how about if we allow Mr. Mullen to talk, because that's the motion on the floor, is to approve item C? Let Mr. Mullen talk about his items in item C, and then let's handle those, and then we can come back and add the ones that are in question about the 425.
Okay, what's item C, anyway?
Well, it's everything. It's all the referee's recommendations. And, and these, it's on the agenda, and so he's welcome.
And they can still be, they can still be appealed, of course, can't they?
The referee's recommendations?
Yes. If people have filed appeals.
Yeah, well.
They filed the appeals, and that's what the referees made a recommendation on, and then we ratify or change.
So we're doing all the ones without the red dot?
Right.
That's what we're discussing. We're not, I don't intend to vote on it today because we don't have all the recommendations back until Monday.
If I may, I apologize for interrupting, Chair Duda. So if we're having a separate packet on Monday, you probably could vote on this today. So we had had a conversation, we had a conversation prior to the meeting, and we talked about C being one entire packet, not voting on it, holding it over till Monday, voting on the whole packet. But now, it's my understanding, and when we had that conversation, that was not, I didn't realize, and I don't know if you did either, that there are two packets. There's actually a C, there's going to be a different packet for Monday. And so if the board wanted to completely wrap up this packet today, they could. This meeting is actually scheduled for two days, and we could just take up the next packet on the next day. So I just wanted to lay that out as an option.
So we could deal with item C today and item D Monday?
Catherine shaking her head.
Shaking her head? Okay.
You have to leave me written instructions on start.
Catherine Hall, yes, that, that is possible. I think there are a number of procedural reasons we thought it would be helpful to save all protests for one final action on Monday.
I know where to go.
Sorry, sorry. So, yes, that, that's possible. You could do two separate, the packet today and the packet Monday separately. There were some procedural considerations. We thought it might be simpler to resolve them all in one final action on Monday, but, but it doesn't, there's no reason the board couldn't, aside from some procedural considerations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
So let's hear from Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Mullen?
So we're addressing just item C?
Correct.
Okay. This is a little bit backwards from what I'd anticipated. Commissioner Duda, just one comment relative to your comment relative to fairness. I mean, this is a process the county has set up, and we try to follow it. And I had, I had two three-to-four-hour phone meetings with the referee, three to four hours on two separate occasions. And I just want you to know that, and the one of them was all in the commercial and a lot of this retail, this stuff that's got the red, the red asterisk by it. And so it was about 30 properties, and not anybody's fault, but the referee didn't even have the packets. So I'm talking to him about a retail property on 121st and Center. He's got no information on it, none whatsoever. So in terms of fairness, I mean, it cuts both ways, I think, for the taxpayer and the county. I respect all that. Commissioner Borgson, I just want to maybe give you one small example as to how I, why I'm here and, and maybe to avoid any confusion on this 425. So if I had a piece of property that was valued at a million dollars that I thought, based on 2019 income, was only worth 800, okay, I filed on that. And then now, due to the COVID, it's down to 600, I filed the 425. So to throw the 1231 out to get an example from a million to 800, because last year's numbers, and then the 425, at the same time, to me, they're two separate issues. And so I came today prepared to talk about the 1231 valuate, 1231 19 valuations of the properties that had 425s, and I was, and I was ready to talk about the difference between the two.
Okay.
And so now we're going to talk about everything else.
Right.
Which I'll go from memory on. The first item is LCW Management. I think that's been resolved with the, with the, based on my conversations with the BOE and the referee. I would scratch that.
Yeah, Claire's in the bathroom.
Can you start over, please?
Sure. The first, the first item that, it is not asterisk on item C, is a property called LCW Management.
Yep.
We're not going to talk about that.
Oh, okay.
I've got that result, I, my conversations with the referee were fruitful, and we came to an understanding.
Okay.
Millard Air Park, the next two items.
You're working off this? Or you're working off something else?
I'm, I'm working off what you guys, what you guys gave me.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Yep.
The next two items are Millard Air Park, same thing. I resolved that with the referee. We don't need to talk about that. If you can jump down to the second one from the bottom, the Premier Bank, don't need, don't need to address that either.
Mr. Mullen, I'm sorry, Millard Air Park, are we talking on both properties?
Both parcels, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If you flip the page, the second item, Val Self Storage, we came to an agreement with the referee as to what we'd settle on.
Now, why did you skip the House?
I'm, I'm just trying to identify the, the items on this list, Commissioner, that we're not going to address. Just didn't have to shorten the list.
So you're not asking for anything on Simmons?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All I'm telling you is on Val Self Storage, we don't need to address that.
Okay.
Village Point Lodging, we don't need to address, and Vogel Paint, we don't need So we will start with Montclair Village at 12929 Augusta. And we have, we came to an understanding with the referee on that one also. I'm sorry, we're out of order, but we're not going to address that one either.
Okay, which one?
Montclair Village, I'm sorry, 12929 Augusta Avenue.
Front page again.
Mm-hmm, front page. Fourth one down.
The next two items are the Terrello Holdings. There's not been any kind of a, I don't think the referee's done anything with it yet. There, nothing, nothing's, I don't know what there is to talk about, frankly, because I don't know what I'm arguing from.
What that?
I mean, I mean, they've got us, they've got us valued at, it's one, it's one apartment complex. They, the county has us valued at 28.5 million, and we submitted an appraisal at 23 million for the two parcels, five and 18. And I'm just saying, I'm asking to respect the appraisal. We had a fire out there. I submitted all this documentation in my packet, probably had 15% of the project was uninhabitable from last September and probably up until Memorial Day of this year.
Commissioner Borgson?
So I have on that, on those two, the first one I have, thank you, Mr. Chair, I have the Terrell Holding at 3909 North 142nd Avenue, and the assessed was at 6370100. The requested value was 5 million, and the referee recommended 620,700?
622, yeah. What's that?
So is that the fire one?
Well, this isn't my list, so I don't know.
Oh, there he is.
I don't know what the referee's recommending.
Okay. He might be able to help. This might help you a lot.
Chris Mustel, BOE. I will have to tell you, much to my chagrin, when I opened that one up, somebody had submitted my appraisal.
Oh.
From a couple of years ago, or a year or so ago, correct?
It was a 19 appraisal.
It was, it was for Hogan, Hogan's Estate. So I did not coordinate that, if you can believe it. My name's on there, but I sent that to Rick Coder to have a look. Jay Wurtman did the referee on it, who does a lot of apartments, is fine. I didn't, I saw that too, but I also saw in the documentations that he's talking about reference to this large fire.
Right.
My guess, I'm only going to guess at this point, that he may have taken that into consideration as a temporary discount such as similar to a partial, when something's not operating, not working, with the intent of having that looked at in 2021, assuming all has been repaired and be brought back up to the level that it should be. I'm just making that assumption. I didn't go through those specifics. So I just want you to be aware, I didn't turn in my report. I didn't give it to them to give it to them, but they put it in there, and once in a while that happens to me. I find my own work being submitted, and I, I will always recuse myself of, of having anything to do with that.
Well, and again, I, I pointed on the, to the fire because that would make sense why the value had been reduced.
Well, and normally, I'd like to think that I could respond to most, anything that I've looked at within reason, and that being one that I didn't do in that regard, I, I don't have any firsthand knowledge, other than my name's on it.
Okay, that's fine. I think Dan's pulling up some additional information for us.
So, Dan Esch, County Clerk, so this is, you're looking at the system that the referees see when they fill out, and it looks like, well, we'll read the comments here to see if, I'll just read them out loud if that's okay. The owner is asking for a value based on the appraisal submitted with an effective date of February 19th, 2019. After review of the appraisal, I agree with the owner. The owner did not have a land value indicated, therefore I've utilized the assessor's land value and calculated a new building value. The overall value is equal to the owner's requested protest value, so maybe there was a typo, because that's significant.
You've got to keep going down. Here's where Rick Coder took over.
Okay.
And I don't see any comments related to the fire, but if you go back up into the, and, and maybe there's something to be looked at, but you keep going back up to the, here, the, up to this file right here. And I believe towards the end of it is where there has something related to the fire. I assume the, the.
203 pages.
Yes, 203 pages, yes. And this is what the referees and coordinators get to go through in about 20 minutes per parcel, if we're going to get it done in 40 days.
We're going to change that.
Yeah, I would like that.
There it is.
So here's some, something related to that and the damage, and probably the physical damage. Here's again, we're talking about real property damage, physical and the loss of income. And I don't know if there was anything in the, we'd have to go back to the assessment packet. I mean, it gets, it gets very confusing and crossing, and I'm just hoping that they've addressed it properly for this year. But that's all I can give you if there's anything else.
So should, what, excuse me, may I? What is, what's the valuation supposed to be? 600,000? 622,700?
I, I believe he was looking at the appraisal, which was 23 million.
Well, he was looking at the two figures combined.
The two combined, because the appraisal would have appraised it as one economic unit.
Right.
We, we don't necessarily see the division between the parcel lines and properties.
Okay.
And it was owned as one economic unit, same owner. But very often, multiple parcels are done when they build a Phase 1, a Phase 2, 3, 4, and on, so on.
So can I finish for a second? Because what is being requested, the total value requested on the first property from 6370100 is 5 million. The second property is 22,223,100, and the request is 18 million, and it was granted 18 million. So the only question I had on this was, so you're getting what you requested, but I wanted to make sure the 622,700 figure was correct.
Well, and Mr. Mullen said he was requesting 23 million, but as I read it, the referee's recommending 18.6 million.
Right, that's what I mean.
So we're already, the referee's already.
Above.
And, and again, I'm, I'm looking at a lot of these, and, and I didn't look at this one for this specific reason, because it's, it's related to my report. So I'd have to call Coder and/or Jay to find out.
Well, your, your recommendation is 5 million less than what they're requesting.
Well, no, it's not my recommendation.
Not yours. I, I appreciate that, Chris. You're, you're fine.
No, I understand.
But the ref, our, the recommendation we're receiving is less than what he's asking for. I'm not sure.
But that's because he didn't know what the referee had decided.
The 22, if you look at the top, the 2020 total value assessed was 22,230, and they requested 18 million, and that's what they got.
Right, so I think that's okay.
So I don't know what to talk about where he went up.
So, so Mr. Mullin, with, now that you have the referee's recommendation, are you okay?
If those numbers are what they're offering, that's fine. We don't need to discuss it.
Okay. All right, great.
And what about, what about the 622,700? What's that supposed to be?
That's.
Yes, it is?
That's, that's the second part of a two-part parcel.
Okay.
So the combined value is the two. And again, I apologize for if you think I'm wasting anybody's time, but I didn't have this data, so.
That's okay. We got it. Good. We're good.
Oh, the, the next item on your sheet is, is the Orpheum Tower at 405 South 16th Street.
I'll pull this one up to you. Sorry, Doug, getting in your way there, Mr. Sean.
Can I ask him a question? Do you know about the referees on this one, Mr. Mullin?
I do not.
So the referee is recommending it stay at the 14,336,000? And you, and the request of your client is 11,840?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the amount of the appraisal that was performed in 2019. And the, the 123119 NOI, their financial numbers, their results were worse than what was in the appraisal that drove up the value of 11,840.
Okay, I, I will speak to that one very quickly. One, at the end of last year, that property was offered for sale at 17 and a half million dollars. I understand an offer isn't at sale or a property. It is now offered for 16 million dollars. It was purchased for, I believe, 13 and a half million, it was 14 million dollars. And looking at the appraisal, which is over a year old now, based upon the January, or I'm sorry, December of 18 rent roll, the market rent that they had anticipated before we do vacancy and collection loss, the appraisal actually utilized and projected income or rental income of seven to eight percent less than the market was saying it could do. And I just have to break out on a minute on apartments. Apartments are very, doing very well. They're, they're high in demand, and even after the COVID, maybe more in demand, because they may be the only property that people see an opportunity to invest in that has less risk than retail, office, and, and some others. So I'm very comfortable on this value. I apologize to Sean that he doesn't agree with me, but we did review this thoroughly, and I'm very comfortable. I know everybody wants a lower value. He's here to save people's taxes. I think this is a fair assessment on this property. It did go down 1 million dollars approximately from last year's assessment to this year, so I do believe the assessor looked at it as well.
Thank you.
But, Chris, if you looked at the NOI that we provided, I mean, we'll put the appraisal on one side, but the NOI was nowhere close to what the county uses in its model, nor was in the appraisal. It's a lot lower. This guy is fighting rates. He's got, he's got occupancy issues. He, he's got no TIF down there. He's competing with everybody, every other apartment complex downtown's got TIF. And, and, and those NOI numbers that we submitted, that you guys would have looked at, that included the income from the parking garage, which is, which is taxed on a separate parcel.
I, I, I don't want to get into a debate here. I, I know this property very well. I know it very well, let's just say. And I'm very comfortable where it's at. I'm very comfortable. We saw, I do understand, we look at the assessor model, they are, they, they utilize a model as they need to in mass appraisal, to look at something individually and break it down. It's very difficult to do, and the timeframe that we're allowed, as Commissioner Boyle has alluded to, we don't have time to spend hours upon hours in going through new analytics. This, à la the opportunity to pile, to appeal to Turk. I've been to some of those Turk hearings, and they can take certainly hours and days, and they usually have examinations, crosswords, backwards, upside down, how attorneys do it. So, I mean, again, there is an opportunity there. It doesn't end there. Given the constraints that we have, we are trying to be fair and unbiased. It doesn't mean that we're always going to be right without additional look. What we see on the surface, I have a hard time disputing at that point where we're at on this particular property.
How many units are in it? Just curious. Sean, how many units?
127, approximately, I think, if I remember correctly, and I haven't looked for several years.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I was going to mention that I sold my condo, our condo, over in Oak Market, and I was looking, and I did go through the Orpheum, and it was compared to places I've gone through, it was not really very updated, to say the least. And I, I was shown a big, great big place on the top, that was, anyway, it was not very, I felt like it was really, oh, I don't know, 1990 or something like that inside. I mean, it was a little bit dim.
The original renovations were in the 1980s, second set of renovations were in the 1990s.
It was, I took the mayor of Gordon, Nebraska, in there, and she'd never been in a building that high, so I remember it real well. Anyway, what if, what if you settled for 13,100,000? Is that something reasonable? That's someplace in between where he's asking for 11,800, and you're, and we're at 14,300? I don't know.
Don't look at me, I'm done.
Compromise in the air?
You know, I think at this point, the owner, who's out of Lincoln, he would take what he could get. I mean, he's just, he's, he's, he is, he's been trying to sell the property. I think that those sales numbers that Chris quoted, I don't dispute them at all, but there's a, there's a, there are a couple of other pieces that were initially packaged together. I don't know if this is on a standalone or not, but I, I would, I would probably, at the risk of him telling me I was crazy, I'd say that, that sounds good.
13,100?
Yes.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask too, our legal counsel, shouldn't we be making motions on each one of these individually, or not?
This would be an amendment. That's why we have the motion on the floor, so we're free to come back and offer amendments.
Okay, well, I, I guess I'd offer 13,100 as an amendment, then if that's what I'm supposed to do.
Procedural.
The only thing.
Being fair.
Agreed.
I mean, they've got it. So where you're going is the only thing that bothers me, and I like to, you know, listen to both of you, but I know the referee who looks at this. I mean, you told us you really feel very, very comfortable with this one. That you really looked at it. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but those were your words earlier, that.
Say, say again?
That, that you had really looked at this one and felt very comfortable with the numbers, because this is one that you worked on.
Well, I appraised it in 2012, when it went to Fannie Mae loan, yeah, so I've been through it, and I have not appraised it recently, no.
But were you the one that decided there shouldn't be a change on this one when it came to the referees?
The referee decided that there would not be a change. I went ahead and agreed with him in this case.
Okay.
I, I, I've got to be careful. I'd like to give a second look to things, but I don't want to rethink it too often, because quite frankly, the, the time is, is we've only got so much. I try to make sure that they have made a logical statement within what they're talking about. And I understand they cannot spend three or four hours on this. We don't, we can't, if you, you do the calculation with 7,000 parcels, you can't spend 10 minutes hardly. And I mean, that, that's almost not fair. It's, it's unfathomable that we can get through this in this time.
I hear you.
As a person looking for an apartment, I'll tell you, this building does not compete with what's downtown and been renovated. Whether it's over on Capitol Avenue, or whether it's on Jackson, and the rents, it just doesn't compete, I'm telling you. And it was eight years ago that this other, you talked about 2012 or something. It is really not, it's not on a par with these newer buildings, and I think it's difficult to compete. Location is fun and terrific. I love the Orpheum Theater and all that stuff, but that isn't really worth all that. I, I just, I just feel that it's a little bit, should be a little bit less, so my motion is to, to take it to 13,100, 13,100, and so I feel like an auctioneer, but anyway, looking for a second, and if not, it dies, and that's it.
Dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
What if I amend your motion and I take it to a million three? Or a million eight 36? I mean, I'm sorry, 13,836.
I'd second that.
No.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second at 13.00.
Which point? I don't know what that means.
Eight, three, six.
This may be COVID-related.
Million, yeah.
And so we can't.
Okay.
No, I just took their number of the three 30 stories.
We have a motion before us then, an amendment to set the value of the Orpheum Tower LLC at 13.836 million. Questions or comments to the motion?
I would just make a comment. I think that helps. This building is not competitive as it should be or could be.
Well, and I'd make the comment, if it's for sale for 16 million, I don't see why we're, we're arguing.
They want 16 million for it. They're not going to get it.
Well, but they must think it's worth it. Well, we started at 17, anyhow. When, when we're 2 million less than what they're asking for it for sale, and we feel an obligation to bring it down even further, I'm just not seeing it.
Well, they're not going to, I, I've seen it. It's not competi, it's not competitive.
Okay. Further comments or questions? Then could we please vote?
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. You vote on this, Commissioner Kavanaugh? Or vote, it's, it's an amendment to. So the amendment, the motion for the amendment to the Orpheum property is 13.836 million dollars. Well, I'm, Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you not voting then?
Jim, are you voting? I never know when you're part of the meeting and when you're not. You're 20 feet from him. But if you, if you're part of the meeting, are you voting?
So you're voting yes? Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll note that. Sorry, I didn't see that, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes five to one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda voting no, other commissioners voting yes. And just for, this is something we do. Basically, we just adjust the building value. When we're given a total value like this, we keep the land value the same and adjust the improvement value to get to the total that was recommended.
Great.
So, okay.
Let me get my mask on. I apologize if I offended anybody by not wearing it.
No, you're fine.
You look socially distanced.
The next item on your list is references Pacific 192 LLC at 19261 Marcy Court. That's on the, the corner of 192nd Pacific. It's a project that is under construction. I didn't know that these numbers were, are what they are. We had a good conversation with the property owner and with the referee, and it was a percent complete. They had us fully occupied on all 12 units, and we only had 10 of them done, and this adjustment is fair.
Okay.
I have no problem there.
Great.
The next item, Royal Wood on the green, same thing. I, I didn't know that the, the number, what the number was. The taxpayer will be fine with that. So that just brings us to the last one, I think, this Mike Simmons house at 11125 Pierce Plaza. It's a 40-year-old house, quality and condition excellent, very good. Mr. Simmons was the Burger King franchisee, if you remember him. He passed away about five years ago. His widow still occupies the house. As I mentioned in an earlier conversation with Commissioner Morgan, she's, she's short on, you know, maintenance and those types of things. But we, we submitted pictures to, to the referee, 50% increase in value this year. In my conversation with the referee on this house, he did not have our packet at all, so he knew nothing. I, I don't know why he didn't have it, but during the course of the conversation, after he said, "I don't have anything on this property," and we did email to him, I don't know if I got there or not. I know the commission, the referee's very busy, but this was consistent to the 25 parcels I had, where the referee did not have the packet with him. And we're doing this on the phone. So I don't know if he, I don't know if they did, you know, got busy, didn't get a chance to look at it, but the 50% increase on a house that's 40 years old is a tough deal. The valuation method, they use a cost method. They had about an 8% depreciation factor. I've had lots of conversations with the assessor on their depreciation methods and don't have any idea how it works. If you assume an 8% depreciation over 40 years, that means it's got about a 500-year life. Houses wear out. This thing's got a, all kinds of attributes like pools and fountains, none of which work. We, that's what we submitted the pictures of, you know, leaky ceiling, mold issues. But it's.
I'd make a motion after, if I could, for 1.1 million 250,000 dollars.
215?
No, yes, exactly what he's requested, 1.2 million. Considering the condition of the house.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second.
TJ, what do you think it should be?
Oh, Commissioner Morgan, I'm sorry, you wanted me to call on you.
Yeah, what I, I mentioned before on this, that you see values in there from 140, 180 dollars a square foot, and it backs up to the interstate, and I know the noise. And I would think it ought to be, and I think it's pretty fair, if we took it to around 175 to 180 dollars a foot, would be a fairer situation on this one, somewhere around 1,375.
I'll second that.
Was that a motion, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, yes.
An amendment at 1,375, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Questions or comments to the motion?
Give me about 30 seconds, commissioners, I apologize.
And if we say no, you're going to take 30 seconds anyway.
And, and I, I did get that right, 1.375 million was the?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm, you can vote what you want.
Could we please vote?
Commissioners Rogers, Kavanaugh, Boyle.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. I wish you'd told me before we voted. Well, if they're brief, go ahead.
I, I'm going to have to, in order for Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Kavanaugh, in order for his mic to work, I'm going to have to stop the, the vote.
All right. I, I asked if there was any questions or comments to the motion, and, okay, my fault, I guess. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I, I would like to hear from our referee relative to this. On each one of these properties, I think that we should hear both sides. It's only fair.
I think we did on the Orpheum.
Sorry?
Well, Orpheum, we heard both sides.
He hasn't spoken on this property.
No, no, that's right.
Are you talking the residents?
Yes.
And, and I'm not a residential appraiser.
Of course.
That would have been Rick Coder, Tom Teft, in, in this case. You know, I, I mean, I've, I've seen a, a lot of numbers. I do, I will just say this much, I know that the higher-priced homes are probably not as marketable when you get up towards a million dollars.
this. I mean, we've heard from...
We don't need to keep...
Well, I mean, we've heard from one side relative to their valuation questions, and I'm just trying to get the county people who have actually worked on this from the other side to give us some idea.
Mike Goodrily, Douglas County, Douglas County Assessor, Registered Deeds Office. Look, there's a list of 4,000 properties. And so, when somebody comes out of the woodwork and says, "Hey, I want this touched up a little bit more," there's no way we're going to be prepared. But if I might make a suggestion for these that you're going to pick out of the mass, I'm going to assume there are referee notes out there and available for each of these properties. And I think what needs to happen is, if it's possible for Dan to pull the note up, then you can see what the referee reviewed when he decided or she decided to recommend not to change the value. Here it is. Well, the referee remarks was protester did not submit sufficient evidence to warrant a change in valuation. So, I have no idea what got submitted.
Well, one clarification, it doesn't say did not. It said protester did submit.
Okay. I apologize. Yeah, okay.
We can see what was submitted if you're interested.
Yeah. Well, okay. But it looks like, but they recommended request totally, I got that.
The other way, the additional evidence.
Okay.
Up a little more. See the additional documents.
Gotcha. Okay. So, there was, all right, I apologize. I just, I skipped over that. I went too fast. It looks like there are items that were provided. All right. Let's go back a minute.
There's 39 pages.
Yeah. But what I'm getting at is, what did the referee recommend?
No, that was the requested value, not recommended.
Referee recommended value, coordinator total value. I'm not sure why they did what they did, to be real candid.
There's a value.
Yeah, there's 1.8. But isn't that, wasn't that the starting point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The coordinator said that they, yeah, reviewed the owner's protest packet, and the referee recommended value.
Yeah.
I agree with the referee's analysis.
Okay. So, not a lot, not a lot of description, I guess.
Main two.
What I'd like to say, while we're just in hold, Commissioner Kavanaugh...
They didn't change it back.
Yeah.
I think you'll find this interesting. If not, please do question me.
Correct.
The home next door was built a few years after this one. I happen to be the third home built, and mine's 40 years old.
Is this your neighborhood, Commissioner?
And this backs up to the interstate. The home right next door to this home is valued at, with the swimming pool next door, built by Bill Esping initially 40 years ago, approximately 39, and has a swimming pool and that sort of thing. It's valued at 145 dollars a square foot, where the one Sean Mullins represent, the widow, is valued, I believe, at 216 dollars a square foot.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yes.
I did part of that in my head. I'm trying to take it down to somewhere around 175 dollars a square foot or 180 right in there, which is still 40 dollars more than the home next door. And if you come out there and listen, and I don't care if you're on my deck, which is right across, or this home is worse, the noise from the interstate, and I said this earlier, you can pick the day and the time because it's not just in the morning or evening or something. It's unbelievable. And they're having a tough time selling them, and that's why about 10% of the homes in there are for sale right at the moment. And they're listed at less than what the assessed value is. And what the referee said, which I appreciate and respect the assessor's department and the referee, the homes in that million-dollar range, and I said it earlier, they're having a tougher time selling them without question. 800,000, 670. It's just a little bit challenging today. And it has always been in Omaha, Nebraska, a little tougher on million-dollar homes. So, that's where, it's a good compromise, and I still think they'd probably have a tough time selling it. So, that's where I am.
How many square feet are we talking in this home?
How many what?
How big is this place? How many square feet?
7,750 per the assessor's property record card.
And currently, it's at what? Can you use your mic, Jim?
Wait. Your turn?
It's currently proposed for 2020 to be 1,827,200, which is 236 dollars a square foot.
Like, I'm just looking on the overall list. Is it currently at 1.6 million?
No, it's at 1,827,200.
Okay. That's the current, what they're paying taxes on right now.
That's the 2020...
Yeah. They pay taxes on that.
They would pay taxes on that, yes. The widow would.
No, I'm talking about last year's taxes. Was that the valuation?
Oh, a year ago, it was 1,215.
Okay.
Yeah. And it was increased 50% from 1,200 to 1,800. And we're asking to take us back to the 1,200 and submitted reasons why and offered pictures. And that's where the referee did not have our packet. We sent it to him after the fact, so he must, it's in the notes that he got it, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you said how many square feet?
About 7,700.
And the one next door that I gave you the numbers on, that I said 145 dollars a foot, has 6,575 square feet. So, I'm doing pretty much apples for apples. And I got to tell you, if I didn't live there, I'd be telling you, we probably should go back to what it was last year on this home.
Okay. And you're recommending 1.375. Is that correct?
Yeah. Now, if somebody wants to say something else, they can say...
No, but I'm just trying to get clear. That's your, that's your recommendation.
And I'll let Sean respond to that. I'm trying to...
Well, I'm just trying to get from you, though.
Yeah. I think...
Okay, okay. That's, that's all I need.
Okay. So, we have a motion for amendment at 1,375. Is that right?
Yes.
And a second?
Yes. And we stopped mid-vote. Do you want to...
Oh, that's right.
Do you want to just redo it, or do you want me to ask Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh for their votes, and I can...
Yeah. I mean, most of it's voted.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Boyle votes yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh votes yes as well. Motion passes five to one. Commissioner Duda voting no. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do, do you have something else you want to bring up, Mr. Mullins?
No, I don't. I'm finished.
I do. I want to bring up these, that I think is, of all the people here, it's my fault, that these, these 16 buildings that were considered for the crisis kind of valuation thing, I would like to ask legal counsel to tell me what I need to do to ask the board to indulge me and have these others considered. I think Mr. Mullins will go through them pretty quickly. What should I, what do I have to do? Declare an emergency?
So, you have, you have two things you'll need to address, and one is the fact the board has already taken action, and the other is they're not on the agenda. And so, if you wanted to address them today, you would have to declare an emergency, vote on that, and have them added to the agenda. You need to do a motion to rescind the prior action and then take them up again. There is time. I believe we're going to meet on Monday if you wanted to add that, without doing the emergency part. If you wanted to add them to the agenda on Monday, then you would only need to address the, doing the rescission, the motion to rescind. If you added them to the agenda, you wouldn't have to worry about declaring the emergency.
Okay. Mr. Mullins, can you be here Monday?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Then that's, thank you, counsel. I appreciate that. I think what I'd rather do is add them to Monday. Do I need to do that today, or do I...
I'll have you, I don't normally participate in that, so I would ask you to talk to Catherine Hall about that, about getting them on the agenda for Monday.
Can we do that, Catherine? I really appreciate this because I messed up.
I can visit with Sharon about getting that on the agenda as well. And so, to clarify, is this, this is these, the parcels specific to Mr. Mullins?
With the red dots.
And you want to revisit the valuation protest, the valuation protest?
Yes.
Okay.
And Catherine, like we did on down below here, some of these are, would be off the board now, so I'll give you an updated list.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, well, I'll tell you what, I'll, if that's the last thing for the, I will just talk to Teresa offline about what to do.
I hope it is. As far as I know, that is all that we have for this morning. We will continue this meeting Monday morning, and that's why the resolution still is on file. We will come back to that come Monday morning.
Do we need a motion to recess, Teresa?
Teresa York, County Attorney. I think you can do it either way. You can do a motion to recess and then reconvene on Monday because we advertised this meeting as a two-day meeting. Or I think you could also leave the meeting open. I think either way is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll recess.
Did you make a motion, Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Is this accurate?
You're fine. You're good. So, to recess until Monday, the Board of Equalization.
I do like recess, too, you know?
Breaks are what I do best.
I've been acting childish so far.
Okay. Now, I'm so sorry. That was a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Boyle. Okay, thank you.
To recess until Monday.
Yep. All right. It's ready. Motion passes six to zero.